Call to order, this special meeting of the Ojai Planning Commission for December 8th, 2021. And for those in the audience and those out in TV land who wonder why it's a special meeting, it's simply because our regular meetings are the first and third Wednesdays. We have an extra meeting this week, or this month, because we have a big backlog of cases. That makes this a special meeting because it's not in the normal sequence. All right, Sherry, would you call role, please?
Chair Quilisi.
Here.
Vice Chair Nolan.
Here.
Commissioner Lottis.
Here.
Commissioner Trent.
Here.
Commissioner Bennett.
Thank you. If you would all join me in the pledge of allegiance. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Next on the agenda is public communications. That's the time set aside during the planning commission meetings for members of the public to address the planning commission on items of city business that are not on the agenda. If you want to speak on an agenda item, please fill out a speaker's card other than applicants. We know you're here. Fill out a speaker's card, give it to Sherry, and we'll get to you when that agenda item comes up. Sherry, do we have anyone in the waiting room who wants to talk? Oh, I'm sorry. Also, there was, excuse me, a plan to have a case involving a lot line adjustment on Country Club Drive to come back to the commission this week, this meeting.
Correct.
But the city and the applicant reached a decision, reached an agreement that made this a ministerial decision, and it'll be handled at staff level rather than coming back to the planning commission for a decision.
Correct.
So.
Less than, yes, correct.
Sherry, do we have anyone who wants to talk? Or, I know we got some emails this week.
No one.
And you'll reflect that in the minutes of the meeting.
No one raising their hand and no cards.
Okay. Well, let's move on then to disclosure of site visits and ex parte contacts. And Vice Chair Nolan, could you enlighten us?
Yes, I'm familiar with both sites, and I've had no ex parte contacts.
Very good. Commissioner Lottis?
Yes, I am familiar with both sites, and I did do a tour of the El Roblar project site with one of the principals, Ramin Shamshiri.
I did as well.
Yes, right.
Yeah, I think, yeah, we had a scheduled.
And, okay.
Planning commission.
Commissioner Trent?
Yes, I'm familiar with both sites. I did have an ex parte, or two ex parte contacts, one with the applicant and one with a community member.
Okay.
I did an onsite tour.
And Commissioner Bennett?
I had a site visit with.
Your, your mic.
I had a site visit probably a month and a half ago with an, and there were a number of the principals there at the time.
Very good. And I, I did as well. I'm familiar with both sites, and I took a tour of the El Roblar site along with Vice Chair Nolan, like you say, four to six weeks ago. But no other ex parte contacts, none regarding the other item. Thank you all for that. Next is our public hearing item, design review permit at 216 East Matilah Street. Lucas, you want to start us off? And then Maura, I think, has the report.
Thank you. Yeah, Maura has prepared a brief presentation on this matter, and I believe the applicant is available. I don't know if they're in person, but likely online, if not in person. So Maura, if you could.
Thank you. Thank you, Chair and planning commissioners. And the applicant should be available online this evening. So the, there's, this is a design review permit request. It's a proposal to convert two office spaces into live-work units located at 216 East Matilah. One of the units is proposed to be about 900 square feet and the other just over 1,000 square feet. The site, including parking, is part of the application tonight. However, the fence that you see on the plans is not part of the application. That will be a separate permit that will not come to the planning commission.
The parking is not part of tonight's decision?
No, the, the site plan and parking is a part. The fence is not.
The fence is not, okay.
Right. This property has a zoning and general plan designation of village mixed use, or VMU. And the primary purpose of the VMU is to provide an opportunity for development of commercial and residential mixed-use projects that are close to local services and facilities and which encourage alternate modes of transportation. The planning commission is charged with review and determination of the request because all and any exterior building or site alterations in the VMU zone is subject to review and determination by the planning commission. The site adjacent to the west looks like it was built as part of a development with the two buildings. However, it was not. That building was built separately in 1956, and it is on a separate site, and it has its own parking. The, I'm going to describe a little bit of the exterior renovations or alterations to the, to the structure. The existing block walls are proposed to be painted a Dunn Edwards black bean, and there's going to be many new framed glass doors. One is on the north elevation. There's also new windows on the north elevation. The east elevation includes substantial change that's going to allow a lot of light into the structure, and that's with new glass framed doors and including a five-panel framed folding door. The south elevation also has floor-to-ceiling new windows as well. There are skylights on the building, and the staff report says that there are five. However, there are six. There's a correction there. As far as the parking, there are currently four spaces on the site, and they do not have the required backup area. The municipal code requires a 24-foot backup area, and they have about 17 feet. So the applicant's proposing to move the spaces forward towards the east property line, I believe, to have that 24 feet. But in doing so, they're going to lose one space because there's a, an existing tree close to the building. So they would end up with three parking spaces. So initially, when the applicant came in, and what your plans show are those three's parking spaces. However, the applicant submitted concurrently to the building department, and through that review, the building department determined that there required one handicap parking space. And the details of that came from the 2019 California Building Code. And I'm just going to give the number of the section. It's 11B-208, and it goes on 208.1 and 2 and 3, and it goes on to describe. But as far as the number of spaces, if you're required one parking space, you have to have one, or excuse me, anywhere between one and 25 parking spaces, you have, you're required one handicap parking space. And if you have one, you're also required to have that, I'm going to call it a loading area, but I don't think that's what it's called, but the blue striped area, so it's van accessible. So if they have that van accessible spot there, which they're required to have, now we're down to two parking spaces. So the planning commission in the VMU zone is charged with determining the appropriate parking for a project, for a site. And so therefore, you are allowed, or you are charged with determining if the two parking spaces, one van accessible, handicapped, and the other regular space, is adequate for this proposed use. Some?
You said one van accessible and one other?
Yes, there's, there will, let me room.
There's four spaces there right now. If we take one away because the tree's too close, that's three.
Yes. But then if one of those is van accessible, we have to eliminate one more because you don't have enough room now for three spaces. However, it was brought to my attention before the meeting that perhaps a third space could be there that does not have the required backup area. That was actually.
Yeah, it seems to me the short backup area might be usable as the blue striped area for the van. I don't know.
You know what? I can't speak to that. However, it's been, the site has been being used with a 17-foot backup area for a really long time, and perhaps one parking space could still have that backup area that doesn't match the code requirements. And the, the other two spaces do match the code requirements.
Okay.
So prior to the meeting, I checked out the, the parking lots in the area, and there is no overnight parking allowed in any of the parking lots, the one adjacent, or the one across the street, or the also one around, down the street at Rainbow Bridge. However, the street parking, it's two-hour parking during the day, but it does allow overnight parking after a certain hour. So if that parking stuff wasn't too complicated, or, you know, you know, it's asking questions, of course. There is a new bike rack proposed, and that is in the area where the fourth parking space is now existing.
The one closest to the building.
Right. And perhaps if that space is used for parking within reduced backup area, then the bike parking could be put someplace else. And one last thing that I want to note is that I want to remove condition of approval number two in the resolution. The one that, the condition number two that you have before you is just, it's unnecessary. It's, it, it states that the planning commission is approving the, the change of use when the change of use is not what you're looking at. You're looking at the exterior changes on the building and, and a site.
Right.
So it's just, it's not a necessary condition of approval.
Yeah, both, both the old and proposed new uses are by right in the VMU.
Correct.
So it's not a decision that we have to make.
Right.
Okay.
So with that, staff is recommending approval with those changes. We do have the applicant here. If you have questions for them, and of course, I am available for questions. Thank you.
Okay. Yes, Vice Chair Nolan, please.
Yeah, I just, I just want to understand the parking and the use. So if each unit is a live-work and the actual type of work is not defined, how many spaces are required per unit?
So in the VMU zone and for, and for live-work.
Yeah.
There, there is not a traditional set of spaces that's required, as would be perhaps in the C1 zone. So, or for a different use. So that's why the planning commission is charged with deciding what parking is, is appropriate. However, I will tell you that per square footage, I did, I did add up the parking that would have been required had it been a, a traditional situation. And how about I look for that while, if someone has another question while we're doing that?
I have one, one other question. So I'm understanding that a handicap parking space and loading area will be required. The loading area, I believe, but don't quote me on this, I believe it's five feet wide. And then the van space, I believe, has to be nine feet wide. So essentially, you're going to lose almost like two spark parking spaces, I believe, for the van, for the van and then the, the loading area. You'd only be left with one parking space. And then that partial space for the, the pepper tree is, maybe that's the width of a compact, I'm not, or the length of a compact, I don't know, or it's the bike. But I, I don't, maybe we can get clarification on that. But it may be down to one parking space.
So in reviewing it with the building department, my understanding was that there would be two parking spaces, one regular and one accessible handicap spot. But that, that's just my understanding. I mean, so I, I believe we'll have to look, that I can look into that. And then I do want to just jump back to the number of parking spaces. If we were looking at a traditional situation, then five parking spaces would be required for the office, and two spaces would be required per residential unit. However, we're looking at, at a mixed use. I'm going to.
Yeah, and I would, I would even, let me just jump in here real quick. The, the live-work aspect is, is really meant to be a combination of, of really kind of a, a smaller commercial aspect merged with the residential component. If you separate those two, I think what Maura was just expressing is that you're looking at a, a potential build-out of the maximum number of parking spaces that would be required for such a use independently identified. Here, we're looking at taking those two uses, merging together, and then recognizing that the two uses merged then constitutes a potential reduction in that requirement. Initially, we're looking at four. Talking with building, we've realized instead that four is not likely on this site, given the requirements for current standards to be applied here. And that's why we've got the van accessibility to, to Commissioner Nolan's point, the, the van accessible parking space, yes, it's almost like taking two spaces just because of the, the aspect of, of access to the side. So that's, that's really what we're looking at here. So it's likely two, maybe three, but more likely that it's going to be two spaces in front of this, this building.
Or, I, I guess the question here is, well, maybe I can look on the plan, it probably tells the dimensions. I just don't, I don't understand if you're having a van space in a loading, the unloading zone, which I believe is five feet by code, but I could be wrong, don't quote me there, then how do, I don't under, if you have those two areas, you're really only left with one regular parking space. I, I'm not trying to argue it, I, I'm just trying to make.
Yeah, and I'm not saying.
For our decision.
You're, you're right. In terms of, of the number of spaces, I'm saying the van accessible space still counts as one space. Even though it's identified as being accessible, it still counts as one space.
Even though it takes almost two spaces.
Two total, inclu, yes, two total, including the van accessible.
Okay. So there's really would only be one space for the people who happen to be living in, there's two live-work units, there'll be only one parking space.
Correct.
For one of those units.
Right.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted to be clear on that. Okay, thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead, Commissioner Lottis.
So, I mean, we are talking about a different beast here, I mean, the live-work. And unfortunately, most communities do require a conditional use permit for this kind of thing, so we really can look at the use. And I think that's important because it does relate to, potentially to the parking. And so in the live-work ordinance, which I did not have a chance to actually look at, what, what guarantees do we have as, as expressed in the ordinance, that basically one person is going to live there and work there, or maybe at most two people will live there? In other words, what guarantees do we have that the same person's going to live there, is also going to work there, and there's not going to be some sort of a sublease arrangement or anything like that?
I think probably those are questions we need to put to the applicant at that point in the meeting.
Well, I'm asking staff because it relates to, I mean, if, if the, if those requirements or those guarantees are not in the ordinance somewhere, I'm, I'm kind of concerned about. And that may relate to potential conditions for this project.
I think the, the simple answer there, Commissioner Lottis, is there are no guarantees that are identified or specified within the ordinance itself as it relates to live-work.
Okay.
Because I think you're speaking to, can someone live there, and then next month, someone, someone different.
Sublease the work area.
Aside, yeah, aside from, I mean, we do have, we do have short-term rental aspects that are tied into the code, so that's very specific. But I, in terms of the live-work, that's not specific enough in our code.
Yeah, well, okay. And then why is the fence not a part of this? It seems like it's, it's exterior, it's part of the project, site plan. I can't, I can't figure out why we don't, aren't looking at that as well.
You know, the, the applicant submitted a fence permit request quite, quite a while ago, I think, I believe, previous to this submittal. And it's not uncommon for a fence permit to be a separate permit. And, I mean, it's certainly not an unreasonable question, but it wasn't reviewed because there had been an application previous.
I mean, an even simpler answer to that.
Well, it's on the, it's on the site plan, and I have to say I'm concerned about the height shown on the site plan.
Yeah, these are, these are typically handled at staff-level fences are. Now, granted, they are also doing a change in, in use and, and improvements or modifications to the site as well.
In design review.
As well, yes.
And I, I, I think that we shouldn't be, I, you know, piecemealing projects leads to confusion, made perhaps bad decisions, something that's not cohesive, not looking at the whole picture. So I, you know, I'm concerned about that.
Understood, point taken. But to, to Maura's point that she just mentioned, the application for the fence came in months ago, and we were reviewing it at that time, so.
Okay, yeah, understood.
What was, what was the resolution of the request for a fence permit?
You know what? I wasn't the one, I didn't review the fence permit, sorry.
I think it was actually too long for me to even remember what the resolution to that was. Yeah, because it was back in March?
Mm-hmm.
Right.
And this application came in September.
But it was, it's within the parameters of what the code allows for fence, but within the fences, walls, and hedges ordinance itself, so.
Okay, I have to say I was a little concerned myself because that limits side, parcel side fences to six feet, I think.
Six feet with, there is the allowance for retaining for up to two feet, I want to say.
Okay.
Wow, I wasn't aware of that either.
Don't quote me on that, I want to say it's either two feet or a foot.
Very surprised, yeah.
Right.
Okay. Well, we'll, we'll come back to that, I guess. Did you have other questions, Commissioner Lottis?
Oh, the, the skylights, are they clear? Is there any, how do we handle skylights vis-à-vis the dark sky ordinance?
I don't think that the ordinance itself actually covers skylights.
Covers lighting fixtures.
Covers, yeah, it covers the fixtures to the exterior, but not necessarily skylights.
Okay, thanks.
I'll, I'll take a quick peek at the code here.
Okay.
Good point, though.
Thank you. Commissioner Trent, any questions for staff before we get to the applicants?
You know, just a clarifying question. So the, the commercial requirement, according to the code, is five spots, and the, according to the code, the residential parking requirements would be two spots, is that correct?
Traditionally, if we're, if we were not, and we were not looking at a mixed use in the VMU zone, then five spaces would be required for the amount of square footage for the offices. So it's really, it's not a, it's not a like-like here. We're, we're looking at completely different things. So the planning commission, though, is charged with deciding the parking, the appropriate parking for this use.
Right. I'm, I'm just trying to figure out demand. Obviously, demand for a commercial space is going to have more parking because people are going in and out of offices, correct? And then a residential wouldn't have as much demand for parking because people aren't going in and out as much. Is that fair?
That's fair, yes. And so, and I want to go, go back to the, the live, the mixed use for a moment. The square footage for these two spaces is about 900 square feet for one and about 1,000 for the other. I think it's a bit more. And if you look at the floor plans, there's like a very, kind of an open, an open floor plan. At least one of the units doesn't even have a door to the sleeping area. It's, it's kind of like an artist's unit.
Okay. Cool, thank you. I appreciate the context.
Okay. Commissioner Bennett, questions for staff?
No questions.
Okay. I, I read that table 3-5 in, in 10-21405, and as I read it, it said if this were, if these two units were residential, then four covered parking spaces would be the rule. If this were commercial, C1 zone, it's one space per 250 square feet, which to me says it's eight spaces. If you've got 1,900 square feet, that's about eight spaces. And since it's mixed development, the table says the requirement is whatever the planning commission decides it is.
That's correct.
If we are, if we are talking, you, you mentioned that there was an application regarding the parking that went in separately from this.
No, no.
Went to the building department?
Oh.
I'm sorry, went to the, to the building department?
The, the, these plans were submitted to the building department, or not. A plan for a conversion from office to mixed use was submitted to the building department. And in that review, their tenant improvement review, they're reviewing the entire site.
As I recall, the general rule is if you are, if you are changing a portion of a parcel, I, I did a portion of my parcel when I remodeled my home a few years ago, then, then with a very few exceptions, you have to bring the modified portion up to current code, but the unmodified portion, you would not have to bring up to current code. Is that still correct? I'm just wondering because I, I.
That would be.
Place a hypothetical with you and, and try to understand what the rule is. If the applicants had proposed no change to the parking lot portion of this, would it stay grandfathered in effect?
No.
Legal non-conforming?
No, because they're changing the, they're, they're getting a tenant improvement for the building and the, and the use, and the, the building department would be looking at that, and they would have to come up to code for parking and, or, and for.
Even if, even if the parking lot were not proposed to change?
That's correct.
They would still have to change it because a part of the building is changing.
They would have to come up to code with the handicap parking. Just the handicap parking.
So that's one of the rare exceptions, like the earthquake proofing of a building, that you have to bring the whole thing up to earthquake standards.
I, I can't compare the two because I'm not, I don't know, but I do know that they have to come up to code with, for handicap access.
Do we, I guess this is really a question for the applicants, but the intended uses of the two live-work spaces, I think we've seen already, is, is going to have some effect on what the commission thinks the parking requirements are. And I want to clarify also, there is public parking on the street, which anybody can use anytime, and there is public parking immediately adjacent where the farmer's market is, but that's all public parking, and that doesn't count against the requirements, whatever we decide they are, for private parking for this parcel. Is that correct?
Correct. Off-site parking, whether it's on the street or in those parking lots, does not.
Does not count.
Does not count for their parking.
Okay.
It's only onsite parking. And I just want to say that the reason I mentioned twice the size of these mixed-use place, space units is because there would only, so, only so many people would presumably be living in them. And then also is the type of business that usually goes into a mixed use, it's kind of a home office or an art studio. It's, not, not that I am saying that this is for sure, but it's presumed also that there's not a lot of traffic going in and out of a live-work or a mixed-use space.
I don't know, there, there are live-work units there on the northwest corner of Ventura and Matilah, and they're very, very, very clearly, some of it's retail space and some of it's residential space. And it's not clear in this case what we have yet, I think.
Yeah, and I think I'd like to have the applicant speak to that as well. I think they've got some vision there.
Right, yeah, that's the appropriate thing, I agree. Let me see, what else would. Let me see, what else would? Yeah, I think that's all I have for the moment. Anyone else have any other questions for staff? All right, well, let's, let's, um, hear from the applicant then, I'm not sure.
He's on Zoom, Brian O'Neill.
Hi there, can you guys hear me?
Very good, yes, we can, sir, go ahead, please.
Hi, um, so to answer your question about the intended use of the, uh, of each unit, it would be much like an artist's loft or a home office, so it wouldn't be an intensive commercial, uh, use.
Would you be expecting that, I, I presume you're, you're going to own the building and you're going to lease space in the building to, to two different groups or persons?
Correct, yes.
Do you expect that whoever leases one of those spaces is going to have an automobile?
Uh, yes, so, so initially, we had, we had hoped that, you can see on the, the first site plan that we had submitted, we had hoped that we would be able to get in three standard spaces, um, and, and then potentially have a substandard space in front of the pepper tree. And then the, the further hope was that we could use a, a accessible parking space in the, uh, existing, um, public lot adjacent to the, to the property, because that, that space would most likely be used during, uh, business hours anyway, wouldn't need overnight parking. But it concurrently, you know what, we concurrently submitted to, to building and safety, and they are really emphasizing wanting to have, excuse me, an accessible space, um, onsite.
Yeah, namely that whatever parking is required for the private use of that building should be provided by the private owner of that building. Is that a reasonable summation? If everybody could use public parking spaces to count against their requirement, then everybody would use it. And that's not the intent of the ordinance, so. Please go ahead, sir.
I was just going to say that the, the thought we had was that it was so close to the property right there, uh, that it would make sense. But, yeah, clearly, it's not intended for that.
Yeah, okay. So you're, you're going to rent, basically rent two spaces, you're going to have two separate tenants, and presumably two separate businesses there, is that right?
Right, the, the long-term goal is to, to have that backspace for, uh, for my wife and myself to, to live there eventually. And we would have a home office.
Do you have a car?
Uh, yes, we do.
Yeah, or two? I mean, this is, we're talking about very small numbers of, of parking spaces and potentially larger numbers of requirements for parking spaces, that's what concerns me.
Yeah, I guess, you know, we're kind of in a catch-22, because as soon as we touch that building, uh, the building code requires us to bring, um, in an accessible space, that's the number one, uh, thing that they want to see. So no matter what we do to the property, we really have to, it, it, no matter what we do, it's going to introduce a, a handicapped or accessible space with that access aisle. So we're kind of, we're facing the same challenge, you know, no matter what the use of the building is.
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
And, yeah, and, and for staff, the building next door doesn't have to have a handicap space because their parking was done prior to the 2004 ordinance in this regard. And, so they just stay with four plain parking spaces.
I, I believe that's the case, but also, there is a handicap parking space, I know it's off-site, but.
At the curb there.
At the curb there.
Yes.
Uh, adj, in front of the adjacent property. However, also, the requirement for the handicap space is a more current building code requirement.
I think there's only two handicap parking spaces in public parking. In the city, one over by the post office and the one you just mentioned on Matilah. That seems a little odd, too, because as big an operation as we have in the city that we only have two handicap spaces.
I don't want to confirm that, but you may, you may be close to correct, yes.
Okay. Mr. O'Neill, did you have more that you wanted to, to talk to us about?
Hi, yes, um, hi, I just, I wanted to answer your, your last question, that the adjacent, uh, city parking lot actually has four accessible parking spaces.
Okay.
They're, they're right out front, that's why we, we, you know, we, we hope that we could use one of those, but.
Okay.
One of the reasons that, um, the parking, besides the fact that the, uh, a handicapped person would have to go behind parked cars in order to access, access the building, is that if they were to put a sidewalk in front of the parking spaces, so a handicapped person did not go behind the parked cars, there's too great of a slope for it to be a handicap slope.
Okay.
So it's, unless somebody's going behind parked cars, there isn't a handicap accessible method of using.
That's not, that's not a level parking lot as it is by any means, so. Okay. Mr. O'Neill, more material for us?
Um, no, I think that, that's, uh, unless you have any other questions. I could, I could say that in, if we were granted the ability to use one of the adjacent accessible spaces, we could potentially figure out a way to create ramping from that public parking lot through our property up to the, uh, the entry points to the building. And then we could end up with, with, uh, three standard spaces in a compact in front of the, uh, pepper tree.
I, I do have another question for staff then, if, uh, separate from the required van accessible parking space onsite, if, if someone uses a, the handicap space that's immediately adjacent on the street, is the slope of the existing parking lot ADA compliant? Is that all going to have to be changed, too?
I'm not aware of whether or not the parking lot is handicap accessible.
Here's what I don't, I, so, I just want to caution the commission, we're, we're diving into really more building-related aspects than we are zoning-related aspects. I want to make sure that we're, we're staying on, on task with what we're looking at here. Here, we're identifying that building has already told us and identified to us that there's going to be a need for van accessible. That's just going to be a requirement based on the, on the changes that are proposed. The details of that are going to be worked out during building, um, during the plan check review. Here, we're looking at how we address the existing and remaining parking. So we're looking at two, probably two spaces onsite, one that's van accessible, and then one that's just a regular parking spot. The code allows for the commission to, through the DRP process, to make that determination or to add, address that it's just not a use in terms of, um, in terms of, from a parking standpoint, not being addressed appropriately. So I want to make sure that we're, we're clear on that, um, that we're, we're diving into the building aspect. And really, the building aspect isn't necessarily something that's up for the commission to review. Nor is staff, uh, prepared to respond to those questions.
All right.
I, I have a question.
Please, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I guess it's more for staff, um. Okay, so.
Lottis speaking?
Yes, I'm speaking, Lottis is speaking.
It's not lighting up around her picture.
So, uh, I'm trying to get at the, um, the existing non-conforming backup space, which to me seems, um, preferable to, you know, losing an additional space. So how do we, what would the commission have to do to approve the, uh, non-conforming backup space? Is that possible? Is that what's, is that something that would, would, is there a mechanism for that?
The, the video's not online.
Not working?
Yeah, it.
Can you hear me?
Just a moment, yeah, we can hear you.
We can hear you, Kathy.
Okay, yeah, I'm just wondering what the mechanism is, uh, to ma, uh, is there a possibility for the commission, if we're interested, to approve the non-conforming backup? And, and presumably then allowing an additional space?
Yes, it is within the commission's purview.
Yeah, the table.
But it's not a very answer, what would it be?
Parking requirement is whatever we say it is.
No, it's, it's entirely in the commission's discretion.
Yeah, based on, based on, on the aspect that, um, the DRP is the controlling, um, use aspect for this.
Okay.
Or not use, let me just clarify, design review permit aspect, the permitting for this.
Okay.
I have a few questions.
Uh, yes, please go ahead, Vice Chair Nolan.
Yeah, um, so it's, maybe this is more of a comment first, so it's interesting, you know, we started off by saying office space that's being converted to live-work, which is great, someone's going to live there, probably reduce their vehicle miles traveled. Wonderful, parking, you know, we're looking at the parking. Um, and then we're saying that you have to put, um, an accessible van parking space for ADA requirements, which I, I'm totally behind, but what I don't get is, we've started off by saying, oh, this is going to be someone who lives there, who has a home office, and there's not going to be visitors or deliveries, or it's going to be so minimal. So there's kind of this conundrum of, okay, now we're requiring van parking space. I guess it's in the code and we have to do it, but it doesn't make sense to me, and I just wanted to say that. The other thing about the backing up, and this is Commissioner Lottis's comment, I would think, before we approved it, and I know this is getting into the building part, but I don't believe you can do that for the van space. In other words, you'd have to lay this out with the van and the loading zone and the one space that would be used for the, uh, whoever's living in one of the units. But, you know, you'd have to see what the logistics are, could you make the one for a regular car only the, I think it was 17 feet? And then the one for the van is 24? It just feels like that would need to get worked out, if, I would want to see it on paper, but it's going to push in before I say, oh, yeah, I'm going to approve that.
I agree.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Might be the kind of thing where we have to continue this, I don't know, I'm not saying we are, but.
Commissioners, I'm sorry, uh, Commissioner Nolan, if I could just, I'm not entirely sure that the feed is currently live. It, do we have confirmation of that from James Hahn? That it's working on?
Oh, sorry.
I think we're having some, I see, we're having some.
The audio's live here in, in City Hall.
Right.
The video is not.
My concern is that it's not being broadcast.
Oh. Okay.
On the TV screen back there.
Yeah, um, my concern is that it's not being broadcast, but I don't know, I just want to avoid a potential issue.
We don't want, we don't want to
Okay.
to, uh, yeah, exclude any part of the public from this meeting as a result.
That's correct, so I would suggest the commission wants to simply take a, a five-minute recess.
Okay, we'll, uh, that's, that's a good idea, we'll take, we'll take a recess here until the, till the video is, is restored. And then we'll go on with the meeting, and the IT department will let us know when that is. Well, we'll see it on the screen.
So come back in about five minutes, check in?
Yeah, try five minutes from now, and we'll see if we're up and running yet, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Yeah, if, if this were.
Good evening. We're having technical difficulties. If you feel that you're also.
Okay.
I've done it.
Some of it's a little worse.
Don't worry about it, I guess.
I'll make sure she.
I'm serious.
So I got, I told them.
So why? So why do you?
Yeah, basically all that.
That's funny.
That's not funny, I mean. You know, here's the issue, these guys are going to tell you that we never had a one day here because we didn't have a party. We didn't have 10,000 people around the town. I've seen them a number of times. They're going to tell you that we can't afford the July. Because we don't have a party. But, you know. I'm going to tell you that we couldn't have the right fans in the bowl. We don't have an empty basis, right? The theater is in the C1 and has zero space.
Yeah.
Really? Okay, so that's non-compliant. But it is, so this is. See, the width of the street for the U.S. It's the same width as the next block. And there's no ingress and egress except at the U.S. So why is there no parking in the next two streets now? The president of the museum scanned the number of years we've ever come to the city that they go ahead and put parking in front of it, and he's like, except in front of the. But Ron Tullio gets one, it's on. It's a general set of departments. One line that's just in the, in the streets. We have. It's just too fast. We've also asked that the first.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
For three, I think it's like a 72L, before sale signs. Have a break. Everywhere. Car rentals are a lot there. Except, the museum, you know, we have special signs. There's special signs on the side of the museum, west side. No vehicles over six feet high. And then. It is a lot. And then we put in a small unit just. For Sherry. Parking lot for farmer's market, we have some great signs. But we have criminal city anecdotes. And those signs says parking by permit. And those signs says, parking by permit. We don't have a staff.
What are you talking about? It's adopted by the city council in September two thousand seventeen.
What?
Complete streets, master plan list. Parking along Ojai Avenue.
Were you able to open that?
Yeah, high access.
I sent it to you, clown, you didn't tell me you could open it. Did all that research for you? I'm here because we can have adequate parking. We have the ability, the ability to control parking in the city.
Do we have four or five?
We can't put up, believe it or not, we cannot put up bike racks without county's permission, but we can change... To say, we're not exploring things, we're just summarizing them. Or we don't have, or it's a problem.
There he is, okay.
We've done two...
We're coming, we're coming back to the session. And, um, I'd like to know, any commissioners have other questions for the applicant who was virtually applicant? Sherry, can you tell if anyone has a question, raising a hand, or real or simulated?
Hi there, can you guys hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you, sir, thank you.
Hi there. Sorry, did you have a question or, or, um...
That's, that's what I'm trying to ascertain right now, if any other commissioners have questions for the applicant. Uh, Vice Chair Nolan, you have a couple, do you have any more questions for the applicant?
Um, no, should I repeat the comment or the question I had earlier? Um, Nikhil, I don't know if that's appropriate.
I think I cut you off, but everything before I cut you off, uh, to, to alert the chair was, uh, was broadcast, so I think we're fine, if you wanted to say more...
I think we're fine too.
Okay, if you wanted to say more, I apologize, I cut you off because we were having a technical difficulty here, so...
Okay, um, just, um, Chair Quillis, could I just wrap it up real quick? So, I mean, basically what I was saying was, um, I made a comment about the live-work situation and the requirement to have the ADA parking, didn't make sense to me, but, okay, if it's per code, I get it. Um, but I did wanna say, um, if in fact that short parking space is adequate for a compact car, which I think typically is a minimum of fifteen feet, I believe you still have to have a twenty-four foot backup for that small space, I mean ideally to maneuver. And then I think the other question would be for the van, when we need to make sure it's per ADA code. And I think it might be the twenty-four, but once again, um, I think we need to see that laid out, dimensioned, turning radius, et cetera, to make sure it all works, but, um, I'll leave it at that.
That staff is to be determined later with the building department?
Well...
Oh, that's here.
Well, the twenty-four foot backup is, is appropriate, is, is per, is to code. And so that would work for the van accessible as well as any other parking space. And as far as the, the potential short parking space that you're talking about, um, it would have, it, it would be short in that it would be not as far east, therefore it would only have a seventeen foot backup. And that's what has been working on the site for many years. And the reason it works really is because there's two parking lots back to back. And so if it needs more turning radius than the seventeen feet that it's got, it gets to go into the other site. So, that would work as is, as it works now, as it works today.
So, are you saying presently the short space, the one with the tree, is presently being used as a compact space?
I'm not saying it's currently being used as a compact space. Um, actually, all four spaces right now have only a, technically a seventeen foot backup space, because they're all, um, because there isn't a twenty-four foot backup space, um, unless you encroach into the adjacent parking lot.
Right.
So, moving all, moving the three spaces forward...
Right, gives that.
Gives the twenty-four, so yes, they all have a seventeen foot backup right now.
So my other question is, I don't know if we have the answer to this, I, I looked through the documents, I may have missed it. Do we know what the dimension is, what the length is of the one short space? Is that anywhere, I may have missed it, I, I tried to look through my...
Um, it is not available to you because it wasn't gonna be counted as a space, so it's not...
Okay, okay, so we don't know then, that's an unknown, okay.
Right, but we do know that it's being used as a space currently.
Oh, it is, okay. Okay.
I think Chair, um, I think the mic for the chair is not, is off, is that...
I'm sorry, you're right.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
I apologize for turning the mic off during the break. Okay, Commissioner Lautes, did you have any other questions for the applicant?
Um, not at this time, thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Trent, any questions for the applicant?
Uh, yeah, just a quick question, I don't know if this was brought up. Um, are you looking to, um, rent this out to like a single individual, single business owner? Um, are you gonna, I mean, are they, is there any way to verify that they will not be single? Or, just curious on, on your thoughts on screening the tenants?
Uh, you mean as, as opposed to like a, a family, or a...
Sure, yeah, just as opposed as anybody, I mean, you could, you know, rent it out to a small family, large family?
Well, I think when, when you look at the floor plan, we've kind of, we've designed it with the idea that it would be an individual, because there's, there's really no bedroom, it's more of like a, a loft space.
Like...
Or a studio.
Yeah.
But if, but if you had an applicant that came in that had, you know, a small family, four people, five people, uh, would you rent it out to them, would you restrict that, or...
I, I would be hesitant to rent it out, I can't say that I, you know, I can't discriminate, I guess. Um, but, uh, I don't think it would be appropriate for a family, no.
Okay.
Or even if it was a couple, if it was two people? Is it, is it, are you looking at restricting it to one person to live there, or could it be a couple?
I, I think it could be a couple.
Nine hundred and one thousand square foot houses in the city right now.
Yeah.
That's not that small, actually, from the old days.
Couple, and I would, um, I would hope that, uh, they would maybe have just one car and, and be, you know, using bicycles and, and walking around town and, um, wouldn't need two vehicles. The other thing, can, can you guys still hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
The other thing I wanted to point out is that, um, there's a project that was approved down the street at, um, I think it was, it's one eleven Blanch Street. That was, uh, three live-work units, and it appears that the parking requirement there was, um, it looks like it was maybe six standard spaces and a accessible space. And it, it appears that the planning commission granted three standard spaces off-site on the, uh, on the street as part of their approval.
I was here for that, I was here for that case, and we granted no on-street parking as part of a parking requirement for that building.
Oh, okay.
I was not aware of them being live-work spaces, it's in the VMU.
Okay, so then they, then they, sorry to interrupt, they only have the three standard and a accessible space on-site for three live-work units.
Three, I'm sorry, you said one accessible space and then one per live-work unit?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, I think that site that you're referencing, uh, Brian, it's Brian, right?
That's the old printing plant, yeah.
Right.
Correct.
I think they paid for in-lu spaces to the count of, of three spaces.
I see.
Ah, okay, I don't, I don't recall that detail of the case. Uh, but I know we didn't grant them any on-street parking as a part of their parking requirement.
There's all, um, there's also another site at, um, it's one-ten Matilah. And that, um, if you look at the, the site plan on that, that actually has a substandard backup space. Um, the worst space actually is the accessible space too. It's a very short backup distance.
One-ten Matilah, that's those live-work units that are there?
I think that's actually commercial, straight commercial.
I don't know.
I don't have the details on that one, I would, I would have to look into that one further, to see where, where parking was addressed.
Okay. I'm sorry, Commissioner Trent, were you, were you finished with your questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I, yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Shita.
Can I mention one more thing?
Sure.
I just wanted to address the, uh, the fence permit. Um, we, when we purchased the property, obviously it's exposed to the, um, the adjacent parking lot. And we had people wandering through the backyard and such, so we immediately applied for a fence permit, hoping to secure the, the perimeter. Um, and we were, we actually were granted the fence permit, but in the process of trying to find somebody to build it, we discovered that the, uh, that all of the fencing contractors are rebuilding fences after the, uh, the Thomas fire, so... We got so close to this, this middle deadline for the, um, for the planning commission for the, for the tenant improvement, that we decided we would just wait until we eventually get a contractor on-site to, to build both the fence and the tenant improvement.
Yeah.
That, that's why it's separate.
Okay. Um, I think we've, we've exhausted questions for the moment, and so, uh, thank you, Mr. O'Neill. We'll, we may come back to you again.
Okay, thank you.
I'd like to, uh, open the public hearing then, and I have three cards. Uh, first up is Bill Miley, then next Bob Daddy. There is a third card for a Souza Francina. Well, Bill, you have a new appendage.
I have a few of these. Display them frequently. Good evening, my name is, for the record, my name is Bill Miley. This proposal certainly fits the intent of the VMU. Live-work is good. Regarding occupancy numbers, it's my opinion that unless the owner limits any rent or lease to only one per, per unit, nine hundred or a thousand square feet, they can potentially hold four people. One of my adult children and families in Santa Barbara spent ten years living in a two-bedroom, nine-hundred-square-foot cottage. So the key here is the one bed. Certainly a sleeping couch or a daybed could be put into the work area for a child or two. Nowhere did I see any proposed leasing language to limit the applicants to one person as the administrative memo says, or a live-work intent. I liked the proposal, but it seems to me that if it was legal, there should be some condition in the contract, at least. On the parking issue, unless the language of the lease includes a one-vehicle limitation per occupant, per total occupancy, there'll be no way of limiting vehicle ownership. We've been talking about that on four-oh-eight Montgomery, to limit it to one or no cars. So, the administrative memos reference the four parking places in the city. Parking lot implies, I assume, that they will be marked for two-sixteen East Matilah, which I now realize it won't. But, if the lease limits ownership to one vehicle, I do not object to the reference of having four available or indicating that there are more spaces in the parking lot, if they can use them. Um, it seems to me that, uh, let's see here. It, okay, the third and last, uh, parking place, which apparently doesn't even exist, would be for visitors, one per unit and then one for visitors, and now I understand it has to be handicapped. So parking places probably will be marked with paint to avoid conflicts like tenant number one, tenant number two. And then the last thing is sort of a funny one. Says it could be seen ironic that an eye doctor's office is visioning into the Ojai VMU future. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Bill. Uh, next up, Bob Daddy.
Good evening, uh, commissioners and applicant. I, I would say we have a set of issues here that none of you folks were here at the time. Uh, the only person was, would be Sherry and, uh, and Commissioner Nolan, and we may have a couple of, uh, visitors here. You are aware of the fact that the city has peeled off and sold part of the farmer's market public parking space to the adjacent building behind on Aliso Street, when it was necessary. What I don't understand is why we have a parking lot that's been there for sixty-five years, pretty much, you know, unabated, and, and then we, we come up with some special conditions. It appears to me that there's plenty of room in the back of this, if the people wanted to put a couple of parking places back there. We've got some overgrown, some arundo, there's no easements, there's plenty of room, there's ingress and egress. And I'm gonna ask a couple of questions, because you guys have got me thoroughly miffed. We've only got two handicap in the entire city. I think maybe we only have two white loanied and unloading zone, we've got one in the Chevron, maybe we've got four total. What I don't understand is, is why on private property we have to have a handicap and a van handicap on the same property when we've got around seven-hundred-odd VMU properties? And I don't believe that's conditioned anywhere else in the city. I don't believe we can find that anywhere. The other question that I would have for you is, what if they just choose to do what Coffee Emporium did and throw up a great big chain, uh, on the weekend and made that private? And it wasn't public? And are they mandated to have public parking on VMU? Because we've got a lot of private residences where we don't have public parking drive into their driveway and park. And, and so it seems like we're making a whole lot of different little things here. Uh, we add parking where we want, we come up with illegal city-sponsored gimmicks like the parking permits in front of a couple of units just to the east of the farmer's market we had for a number of years. And in my opinion, we're going overboard on this parking issue. Um, I don't understand where we have on a public street in Ojai a single van-accessible handicap space. And it just seems like we're overconditioning this one lot, it's, it doesn't make sense. The other thing is the visual here, you're giving a horror show to the people out in Ojai that want to do some, some improvement and development. This is, this is really a cold water bath on them, thank you.
Thank you, sir. All right, next up Souza Francina, please go ahead, ma'am. And welcome to one of our city council members.
Good evening. This endless discussion about parking, it points to the fact that Ojai does need a car-share, um, program. And, um, it's going to become more and more of an issue as we increase the village mixed-use zone and we have more density and accessory dwelling units. And there's no reason why the, the people living there, I, I believe it's legal, I, I did ask this question when parking issues come before the city council. The owner of the property can require in the lease, um, either no cars or a car sharing between the two tenants. I'm sure there's plenty of people that will wanna live there, he'll have at least forty applicants, and among those people will be those that are willing either to not own a car or to share a car between the two. For sure, he should require no more than one car per unit. I, it's, it's, it's very important that the city, and maybe you've done this, has made clear to applicants that they can, um, make requirements like this, so that there's not suddenly somebody has to, you know, some people have two or three cars and they park them on the, on the street, and that's what you're trying to, um, prevent. Um, and the other thought I have is that the code does sound outdated, I'm, I'd like to know when... I'm I'd like to know when the the code was last updated. And maybe we can have another look and make it more in keeping with our goal to reduce car car usage and encourage, you know, in in the village, in in the downtown core, encourage car sharing, public transportation, bicycling and walking and trolleying. Thank you.
Thank you. My recollection, looking looking at the municipal code online, is that this portion of it was done in 2004 as part of a general redo of Title X. Okay. Next up, Joe Andrew Laitis. Please go ahead, sir.
Good evening, my name's Joe Andrew Laitis. I'm actually an architect from Santa Barbara. I know nothing about this project, but I thought I'd help you out and maybe help out the applicant. I believe the ADA code allows you to not have signage for ADA parking when you have four or fewer spaces.
Not have?
Not have enforcement signage. So what that means is anybody could park in the ADA space. So just pass that on. The applicant would have to verify that. I don't have the code.
Are you saying that's that's the law in Santa Barbara?
So that's that's the code. That's accessibility code. In four or fewer spaces, you don't need parking restriction signage for an ADA space. But you have to paint the space and have it be available for a handicap person. But anybody could park in it.
So anyone could park in the blue outlined space? Anyone could park in the blue crosshatched?
Can't park in the blue crosshats, but you can park in the ADA space if it's four or fewer spaces.
Okay. Is that? You tell us, Nikhil, is that? Does that rule operate here?
Yeah, it's a state it's a state code, so it would apply here.
That's.
I just just to be, I would still want to look into that further. I mean, I mean, we've we've got ver- we'd have to verify that information.
The we'd have to verify the exact, I I don't know exactly which code section the the commenter is referring to, but if it appears in the state code on accessibility would apply in the city. But we'd we'd staff is going to have to confirm that and how it if it applies to this particular situation.
Okay. Then maybe a follow up to that. Is it possible to make a decision on some part of this case and continue some part of it? Or do we have to continue the whole thing until we can make a decision?
If there's a comfort level with certain aspects of this, certainly you could make a decision on on certain aspects and ask for additional clarification on others. Like, for instance, if there is the parking aspect that you're looking for a clarification on, we could bring back that aspect. But the two feel somewhat married in terms of how I'm seeing it. But the commission can make that determination.
The the only caution I'd have for the commission is that you're basically splitting up this design review permit. And the design review permit includes consideration of
I'm not comfortable doing that.
Parking. And so there's only right now pending before the commission is just this DRP, which includes a variety of conditions and including the including the parking. So in page two of six in your packet, there is the the resolution with the condition of
Attachment A is the resolution, yes.
Yeah, so which includes the conditions of approval and also includes the the commission to make a decision on the parking requirements. So I would caution the commission against piecemealing this. If the commission wishes to wishes to continue this item for further clarification on the parking, it can do so. But the design review permit is sort of a package.
I would have thought so. And and you just mentioned parking. But I've been through this resolution a couple of times. And the only place that I saw parking mentioned was condition eleven saying on street parking shall not be counted toward onsite parking requirements. I don't see it anywhere else. And the table in the code says the parking requirement is whatever we decide it is.
Correct. And so you're going to have to make that decision as a threshold decision. But it's entirely your your call as a commissioner.
But it appears that we cannot, we cannot do anything that conflicts with the building department either.
Correct.
But but we can ask them to review that decision and to look further into whether there is as as the commenter said, whether there's signage required and in fact, whether there really it really is required with this kind of mixed use. You know, I'd I would like a second look at that.
Yeah. I'm sorry, before we get any farther, the public hearing is still open.
Sorry.
Anyone here present or online, Sherry, who wishes to speak on item one?
No.
All right, then we're going we're going to close the public hearing and discuss this among ourselves. My question for the city attorney would be if if the commission decided that the four currently marked spaces, even if some of them are extended, is adequate. Does that break any laws or any rules with the building department?
I have to
And if the building department says you have to put blue paint around one of one of the spaces and you have to put cross hatching on another on another of the spaces.
That's a separate discretionary approval from the building department. If you wanted to approve
It sounds like it's something ministerial because the part the the building department is doing it. It's not the commission.
Yeah, I'm I'm sorry. I'm when I said discretionary. I mean, it's it's a it's a it's minister. I believe that might be ministerial with the with the building department. If the commission decided that four spaces was okay, we could we would we could move on.
And the building department could decide that some of them have to have blue paint on them. But I still don't know if that means that no other citizen can use that space. That's a question I'd like to have answered.
And that's a question that would be better directed to the building department, which we can. So I'm hearing that there is some questions that need to be answered before the commission can feel comfortable making a determination.
Well.
But I go ahead. I was going to say, but I want to also, if we're if we're going back and having those conversations and getting specific responses, I want to be clear on a couple a couple of items. One is the dimensions. We were talking about the dimensions. And I want to I want to just understand what what the commission's flavor is on on the reduction of dimensions and turn and and backup aspects. Now, I I know, I don't know if Maura mentioned this, but I wanted, and I I think everybody's been to the site. There's another parking lot on the other side. So it's almost a a mirror parking lot on the other side where at any one time you're more than likely going on the other properties.
You're going on the you're driving on the other parcel, yes.
Exactly. There isn't currently a reciprocal parking access agreement between the two parties. That could be something that we can explore and have a further conversation with with the applicant on as well. The the last piece is the number of parking spaces. I know we we broke it down in terms of the the two different uses and then merging the uses into what's now a live work and understanding what that aspect means. And similar to what a mixed use is, you're looking at reduced need and reduced impact, I would say, to a certain degree in terms of parking for this site. And I think those are those are important pieces to understand and to kind of let soak in that if we're looking at the worst case scenario, we're no better than the Starbucks coming in. I'm not saying that that's what's happening here, but they're always looking at the worst case scenario in terms of parking here. We're this is within the what is really kind of the downtown core area. And there's a lot of different uses that are intermixing, being used at any one time during the day. So I think there needs to be some clarification on that, which we can go back and get as well.
On the point of the four spaces, the what the building department does is completely outside this commission. The the commission could approve the four spaces and then it would leave it to the applicant to then have to deal with the building department, whatever restrictions the building department does. You're 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 being asked to approve this design review permit and be okay with the four spaces or not be okay with the four spaces? That's kind of just, and I understand that what the building department thinks may weigh on on your on on the idea of four spaces, but ultimately, it's largely irrelevant to your decision here.
No, it is. It's wrong.
Yeah, I just I definitely
I disagree also.
I do too.
What what I mean when it's I want to say it's irrelevant, it's it's independent, I would say, independent of what your decision here. Poor word choice on my part, but it's independent. So but ultimately, that'll be a con- what happens with the building department will simply be a a conversation between the applicant and the building department at that point.
It would almost become a catch twenty two to cer- to a certain degree.
Yeah, it feels
And I I would prefer, if if I could, that that we go back and have that that deeper conversation. Ask more of the specific questions about whether or not there are exemptions, as one of the architects had mentioned earlier, that are potentially applicable given the current configuration that we're looking at today.
Yes, that's what I I would like a closer look at what the law is actually, the state code is actually requiring and what the what the opportunities are for, you know, divergence from sort of the standard.
Okay. I am I am personally not comfortable at the moment with the simple stricture that the parking requirement is whatever the planning commission says it is because it sounds very likely that it could be negated to some extent by the building department in a wholly separate decision. The building department could conceivably come back and say, no, you need two parking, two handicap spaces, which occupies four spaces full of ground. And then you have nothing for customers, you have nothing for residents, you have nothing but handicap spaces. I'm not saying that's what's going to happen, but I don't know what's going to happen. And I'm not comfortable saying that any given number of spaces right now is acceptable if we don't know how it's going to change by some part of the city staff, independent of our decision. I don't know what to do with that.
Yeah, so there's, I mean, there's a bunch of different tools we have at our disposal per the code. One is in Lufy. If if you can't provide onsite, you can certainly pay within the in Lufy aspect. Another would be
How do we decide how many onsite spaces is acceptable if we don't know what's going to happen to those onsite spaces after we make our decision?
Yeah, and that's where we'll go. We if the commission, if it's commission's pleasure to continue the item, we can go back and get that clarification. That's certainly one of those aspects we can do.
I'd also like to hear about 111 Blanche. The applicant referred to it as three live work units. I was a part of the commission, so was Vice Chair Nolan at the time. And I don't recall them being characterized as anything but commercial space. Granted, they're in the VMU, but they're they were talked about as commercial spaces. And I don't recall whether there was any in lieu parking fees, but I think we should know about that.
Yeah, I don't know that I want to get into comparative analysis between between the two, but we can get your information to clarify
At least
how that how that was
Give us some operating bounds on what we're trying to accomplish here. Any other comments from Commissioners? Vice Chair Nolan, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just wanted to say I I agree. I think we need to continue the item, have staff go back, whether they meet with the applicant, have them come back to us with a solution that is per code, per ADA code, per the signage, whatever it is, the state signage for ADA. And then we can make our decision. I I think they're integral. And on so many of our projects, we actually have the parking laid out, they're numbered, you know, the back out space, et cetera, because the parking is really integral to, especially like for a commercial or VMU project and even to our residential projects.
Yeah.
So I I don't think we can separate it. I don't want to separate it. And I do think continuing is a wise move.
Okay.
I I do have a
Please go ahead.
One more thought to throw in there. I I'm sort of curious. One of the commenters raised the possibility that the, while we've been focused on the front of this building, that in the back, there is an accessible parcel of land. And I don't know if that
The question is kind of how accessible. I walked around the building again myself today. And you can you can walk to that space behind the building, but you can't drive through through it unless you either come around the lavender in parking lot and behind the the sort of mirror image building that's right next to it. Or you drive through a parking space that's in the public parking lot to the east. So I I don't at the moment, I don't see how any space behind the building could be characterized as accessible for parking. The handicapped or otherwise doesn't matter.
Unless there's some sort of a reciprocal access agreement. I think that's the only other
With the city or or with
The city or some other private entity.
Lavender Inn and the adjacent parcel.
We can look at that further if if there's pleasure from the commission to look at that rear portion as well.
Well, I'd I would sure personally like to get some more answers. Commissioner Trent, do you have any questions or or other thoughts about this before we decide what action to take tonight?
Yeah, I I would also like the city to look at potentially the shared parking with the adjacent property, particularly for handicap. I mean, do we need two handicap spots for both of those properties? It's it's a pretty small little parking lot for both of those buildings.
I think we don't need it for the adjacent parcel because it's grandfathered in the shape that's in right now, which is four open parking spaces.
And Correct. But if they decide at some point that they want to redesign that location to fourteen property to four fourteen property owners, would they be required to have a handicap spot there as well? So we'd have two handicap spots on that parking spot in that parking lot?
And Sounds like it.
The general rule, and I
Is that overkill?
The 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 general rule in in the California ADA standards is usually it's one accessible park a parking space for one to twenty five spaces, which must be van accessible.
This and the total, the total amount of parking on that entire lot is about eight, right?
The total parking spaces right now is eight. And if the other building owner decided to change anything, it sounds like the color of paint on the building, then they're going to have to put a van accessible parking space on the other side of that parking lot. Is that correct?
My understanding is that we have a commercial, um, commercial zone with a change of use from office to mixed use or a live live work. And because of that change is where the site has to come up to code for for the ADA.
So it would have to have two two van accessible parking spaces out of the eight that are there.
If they were painting the building, that's not a change of use and would not require coming up to code with a van accessible parking. And when we're talking about eight parking spaces, there's two separate sites with two separate required parking.
Right.
So it's you don't have eight spaces, you have four and four.
Right. So you would you would have a requirement under many conditions to put a second van accessible parking space in that eight space parking lot.
If in fact, they were doing a change of use.
Yeah.
But it only, yeah, only if there's a change in use. And these are, but it's an eighth space, but it's actually two space, two separate lots, I mean, two lots that are adjoining.
Two separate parcels, each having a parking space.
For this one, the the requirement is simply one accessible. It has to be one accessible, one space, which must be van accessible between one and twenty five. Is I is usually the general rule under the California ADA. But again, that's a point of clarification.
And that offloading area couldn't be on the sidewalk. It is it is for the parking space on the street that has blue painted curb. That offloading area is on the sidewalk.
That's a specific question, I think, to be for the building department, which we can clarify.
I'd be interested to hear that that answer as well. I I'm just, I'm trying to get my arms around what are the real requirements? It sounds like the real requirement is one van accessible parking space. But that that's still a little vague for me because I'm not sure how that works since the on street handicap space is allowed to offload onto the sidewalk. It's not clear to me that another blue marked space couldn't offload onto the sidewalk.
Right, we can get that clarification for you. I I don't want to, I mean, I feel like we're going around in circles here regarding the the van accessibility and we'll we'll get that clarification for you. In addition to that, I'm seeing in terms of continuing this item and asking for additional clarification, it's the ADA, it's it's potentially looking into access agreement. The eleven one 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 Blanche, looking into that, the rear access component. Doing a deeper dive into that as well. I think that's, am I missing anything here?
A reciprocal reciprocal parking agreement, although that's the applicant working with the next door neighbor.
Yeah. Reciprocal access agreement. Yep, that was the second one. Yep.
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Uh, yes, Commissioner Lottis.
So I I just have very, I I'm in favor of continuing this to get clarification on the parking requirements. and, uh, I don't know whether I'm okay with three spaces, which is what we're looking at, maybe. So I don't know, but I, I at least want the information to decide. But I, on the, I, I do have just brief comments on the design review. One is the color. It's so dark. Um, we live in a hot climate. The, it's not very climate-friendly to be using such a dark color, and I encourage the applicant to come up with some other alternative. I encourage the applicant to think about the, uh, something about the skylights and how we deal with the, um, the night sky issue with that, and, um, that's it, that's it. Since I guess the fence is out of our purview, I wish they would take it down to six feet high. That would keep somebody out as well, especially when it's on top of a retaining wall. But if that permit has already been issued and we do not have purview over that, then I, I defer to staff on that.
Has the, has the fence permit been approved, and what does it look like?
The fence permit is outside the scope of this hearing.
Yeah, we could have a conversation with the applicant after this meeting.
Separate, separate from this hearing, okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Trent, any, any other thoughts?
Um, no, other than we need to look at parking in general in downtown Ojai.
Okay.
Other than that, no.
All right. Lucas, I think you've, you've covered the things that the commissioners would like to hear about. When, when could we expect to hear from you on them? We have a meeting next week, but I think we have a full agenda already.
Yeah, it would be next year.
And then the next meeting is January 5th, I believe.
Right, yes, the next regularly scheduled agenda would be for the January 5th.
Would that be a time that you would feel comfortable coming back and, and addressing all the things that we've discussed?
I would prefer that we continue it to the second meeting in January to make sure that we're covering all of these aspects. And I want to make sure that we have a couple of different conversations. What I don't want to do is bring it back too soon. I think you've seen items previously where we bring it back too soon, or think that it'll come back, but we're still working out and ironing out those details.
At the same time, I'd like to make it, I'd like to continue it to a date certain so that we don't have to go through all that hullabaloo again.
Yeah, that's, I think that's appropriate.
Okay. Commissioners, any thoughts on whether we should continue to a date certain? That would be January 19th?
I'll move that we continue to the second meeting in January for staff to do their research and discuss with the applicant, uh, some of the commission concerns.
To the second meeting in January, so if we threw in a special meeting, it might happen a week earlier. Or anytime, anytime other than January 5th.
Now, so if you're continuing to a date certain, you need to pick a date.
Second meeting in January is what I suggest.
Anyway, that would be January 19th then. All right. There's a motion on the table. Any second to that?
I'll second.
Very good, thank you. Discussion of the motion. Anyone? Then Sherry, let's call the role on the motion to continue to January 19th.
Quilisi?
Yes.
Nolan?
Yes.
Lottis?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Bennett?
All right. Feeling sort of unfulfilled, but that's because we have a lot of questions yet. And I thank, I thank Mr. O'Neill for your patience with this so far. We'll come back to a decision in about five weeks. All right, item two is feedback regarding parking and circulation options and proposed facade restoration for the Hotel El Roblar. Lucas?
Thank you, Chair, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Lucas Seibert, Community Development Director here with the City of Ojai. The item before you tonight is, is in fact a discussion item. I know it's on the agenda, it's identified as a public hearing for the administrative report, but it is a discussion item. There is no decision that, that we're looking for tonight. But certainly, um, feedback for tonight regarding the Hotel El Roblar, which is formerly the Oaks at Ojai, located at 122 East Ojai Avenue. The zoning for this site, um, just to kind of set the table here, is, is C1, uh, commercial, and with a TCO or thorough corridor overlay included with this as well, being that it's on, along Ojai Avenue. This item was previously scheduled for two commission hearings. The first was September 8th, the second was October 6th. During those, those periods, there was certainly a lot of public comment that came in. I think in total, our count today is, with this meeting for discussion tonight, we have 55 comment letters that have been received at this point, some in support, some expressing concerns. I think it's important to note with the September 8th and the October 6th hearings that were scheduled and then continued, the applicants have, have gone back to the drawing board regarding certain aspects. Uh, parking is one of those. I think they'll talk about that here tonight. In addition to that, uh, there was also the identification of the site being identified as a historic resource recently. Because of that, the, um, staff has, has gone back and is now reviewing that, and, um, will be addressing that. That'll be coming forward to this commission at a later date.
So, um, real quick though, I just wanted to caution the commission. I just want to note that this is a discussion item and not a, you're not being asked to make a decision. So I would urge the commission to be cognizant of the fact that, um, they, uh, do not have, be, be put in a position where they would have to recuse at the time of, uh, the actual, if, if and when we get to the point where we're making an actual decision.
So potentially more interaction with staff and with the applicant, but not among ourselves, that sounds like deliberation.
Correct.
Got it.
Or to, you know, make any definitive judgments on...
Right.
Or commit to, uh, there's nothing to vote on, so I would caution you not to commit to vote on anything one way or the other, because potentially you may have to be recused.
But just, just to, to clarify, if the commission has concerns regarding certain aspects, they can certainly raise those.
Yes, they can raise concerns, absolutely.
Right.
Okay. Uh, with that, staff seeing an opportunity here regarding, and I want to just kind of set the table for tonight's, um, discussion. It's really kind of, we're looking at the parking aspects as, as it's evolved since the September 8th, October 6th meetings, where the item was going to be heard, but additional information came forward where it was not, um, appropriate for the commission to be, to hear those items. This is a little unusual, I will have to admit, um, being that as a DRP, typically the, um, the DRP, we're looking for determination. In this case, we're actually having a discussion while we continue to, um, process certain aspects so that the, the application can be deemed complete, and then we can process, um, the project moving forward. So at tonight's meeting, I think we're looking for feedback regarding parking. Um, we're looking for feedback regarding the, the use aspects that are being proposed for Hotel El Roblar, and, um, and that includes like the restaurant, the event center that's being proposed, the, the lounge area towards the front, and look at it slightly to the east. Uh, in addition to that, there are off-site parking, um, areas for consideration as well. I think when you saw, when you saw in, on September 8th, all of the parking was being, being offloaded. The applicant has gone through great lengths to ensure that, um, a large portion of that parking is remaining onsite. So I think there's, there's certainly some, some kudos to the applicant in terms of working towards that. Um, and that's in working with staff and also seeing the comments that came in from the community. I would also like to say that the applicant has prepared a presentation. Before I hear from the, the, the commission tonight, I'd actually, um, request that the commission hear from the, the applicant in terms of their presentation so that the two aspects tonight are merged into one. And then if, I mean, obviously, if the commission has any questions of staff, we could certainly go through that, as well as, um, questions for the applicant as well.
Okay, so we'll hold all of our questions until you're through and the applicant is initially through?
Yes, and with that, I'd, I'd, I'd like to have the applicant kind of walk through the proposal from, from kind of the front end to the, to the back end for what we're looking at today.
Okay, uh, with, with emphasis, I would say, on what has changed, but please, go ahead. Uh, please come up, applicant, and, um, introduce yourself and tell us what you'd like to tell us and show us your slideshow.
Okay, thank you. Um, Lucas, do I have the, uh? All right. Well, I guess I'll, I'll start, but, uh, good evening. Uh, I wanted to start by thanking everyone for taking the time to review our, uh, proposed renovation. We wanted to thank, um, um, I just wanted to thank, um, Lucas and Sherry and James for all of, um, your efforts these past 12 months in getting us to this point, so thank you all very much. And I wanted, wanted to introduce you to our team. Uh, we have Warner Ebbing here, Eric Good, and Jeremy McBride. Uh, and my name is Ramin Shamshiri. Our proposed project intends to renovate and restore the hotel, most recently known as the Oaks, into the Hotel El Roblar, which was the original name of the hotel when it was built by Edward Libby in, uh, 1919. I, I first stumbled on the pro, uh, prospect of renovating the Oaks in 2016 when I was introduced to Kimberly Clef through a mutual friend. I toured the property and let her know that, uh, at that time, Warner and Eric and I had been looking for, uh, to do a small hotel project in Ojai for about seven years. And Kimberly had noted that their family may consider selling the, um, the hotel down the road and would keep us in mind if they did. So we kept in touch, and in 2018, almost a year after, uh, they had closed because of the Thomas fire, Kimberly had called and said they'd be interested in looking at offers. And we were initially a bit hesitant because we didn't think we, it would pencil out, given the groups that we were bidding against. But, uh, knowing there was a lot of developers sniffing around, and, um, we knew that we were passionate about the project and renovating it in the right way, uh, focusing on the appropriate design, promoting, you know, quality of, uh, service, and simply taking a different approach to a full-service hotel in the center of Ojai. As much as we wanted to do it ourselves, we also, as locals, we were also concerned about it falling into the wrong hands. The Clefs had a number of strong offers, and after much back and forth, they informed us they were going to move ahead with our offer because they felt it was in the best interest of the city. And we had, um, then organized a lunch with Kimberly and a good portion of the family, and we had the pleasure of meeting her mother, um, who's an incredible spirit, the late Sheila Clef, her father Don, sister Kathy, and her brother Ken. And, uh, we discussed our intentions to bring the building back to its original roots and, uh, make the entire property feel like it's always been there, which has been an integral part of the history of Ojai. At that time, we wanted to really express to them, much like we want to express to you tonight, how honored we were to carry, uh, the spirit and tradition of this iconic property, and we intend to treat it with the utmost respect and care, both architecturally and socially. Uh, we hope to create a place that not only caters to visitors, but also can capture the spirit of the local community and invite them to share in all the amenities. This hotel is over 100 years old, and most of the things, everything we are proposing is within the historic entitlements and uses of the site. We believe the ultimate aesthetic impact will be minimal and help improve the look and feel of the site, and, uh, while implementing conveniences and efficiencies of a modern full-service hotel. Uh, one of the most rewarding aspects of preserving and restoring a historic building is that you have the opportunity through process to reexamine how the characteristics from the past can enhance and preserve a sense of community today. Uh, this process allows you to rethink how to apply curtain learnings and efficiencies to continuously improve and honor these historic characteristics and provide an experience that we hope the stewards of the past will be proud of. So we engage with StanTech Consulting to, uh, help guide our ideas and provide input into a program that makes, uh, sense for the site and the community at the same time being economically viable. Uh, the obvious area that was apparent initially was the existing parking configuration, uh, and how to can, um, how we could open up the public spaces that we read so much about in the 1930s to the 50s and still comply with code. There hasn't been, you know, so how could we do this? But there hasn't been enough parking to begin with. And for those that are not aware, the parking was never conforming on this site and had a historical shortage of 34 spaces since 1972. Uh, we toured some buildings and spent time looking at the references, um, of the past to inform us on how to accomplish this, and one great example of parking is what the Ojai Museum has done, where all the parking is in the back. Given the visual opportunity we have, uh, as a hotel is one of the first things you see as you arrive into downtown, downtown Ojai, it seems ideal to limit the, uh, exposure, the visual exposure to cars and parking. In August, we configured a plan where a large majority of the parking was dispersed among several off-site lots. And after receiving input from staff and the community, we quickly realized, uh, it was the wrong approach and took the last few months to refine our plan and keep the majority of the existing parking spaces onsite. Overall, we're offering more parking than was there before, while still achieving a great experience for the guests and the community. Um, I just want to walk you through some of our initial concepts for the site. We really looked, um, into the history of Ojai for inspiration and what drew people to the area, uh, the beauty of the landscape, the climate, um, the lifestyle, the agriculture, these are early, you know, images of Ojai. You know, we looked, uh, to some historic figures like, uh, Beatrice Wood and Christian Merdy, and how some of their touches could influence our design. And, uh, we looked, um, early at, uh, Irving Gill. Uh, this, we were, the original architecture of the building was done by Mead and Requah, and, uh, Gill had mentored Mead and Requah before they opened their own, uh, practice. And, uh, Libby had hired, uh, Mead and Requah to work on, uh, most of the historic core. And these are some of the early photos and drawings, um, of, of the Hotel El Roblar. So, as you can see, this was the original photos and the original entrance. And, um, over time, the property has gone through many lives and repairs and additions and modifications, so... And so, uh, this is our proposed site plan, which I think you've all reviewed in the package. As noted, we'd like to move a good bit of the parking on the perimeter to replace it with more landscaping so that you're not looking at a building surrounded by cars with curb cuts, but, um, rather a nicely landscaped perimeter with usable sidewalks and additional street parking. We want to encourage pedestrian foot traffic that brings the vibrancy to the community. Things like the Ojai Playhouse, Libby Park, the playground, the tennis courts, Libby Bowl, the museum, Bart's Books, the library, the farmer's market, the arcade. Everything is within a five-minute walk of the hotel. This is our proposed facade on Ojai Avenue, which hopes to reincorporate, uh, the original pedestrian arch that was built in 1919. And as noted, the whole mood of the hotel should feel pedestrian-friendly, and we want to encourage people to park their cars during the stay and do most of their exploring on foot, or maybe with some bikes from the mob shop. This is some, some, uh, initial paint schemes we've been looking at. And we even found some original drawings of the lobby, uh, that Mead and Requah had done that were, uh, you know, in the library. So this is the original drawings of the lobby, and we use these to kind of, uh, inspire our thoughts on the, um, the interior lobby, which, and these are the bathrooms, and then, so this is the rendering, uh, of the lobby, which we based on those drawings. We'd like to bring back the original rock fireplace, uh, the born-bed paneling and the use of classic terracotta tiles. And these are some draw, uh, line drawings of the restaurant off the main lobby, and this is what we'd like to have open to the public. And, as you can see, and this is the, uh, proposed, uh, covered patio on the east side of the restaurant. This is the proposed breakfast and lunch, uh, restaurant facing the pool. It's on the north side of the main building, and it's one of the areas we're proposing to demolish is the north facade. It's not considered historic and has a mid-century look and not really in keeping with the characteristics of the rest of the property, but we hope to bring back the original character of the building with a more Spanish-style elevation and interior. And this is the proposed banquet hall, originally known as the Flamingo Room. Uh, this is slightly expanded but remains within the existing footprint of the hotel. And these are just some images of, uh, the guest rooms, which are, you know, this is the queen room, the king room, and the suites. We also propose, are proposing to re-configure a single-story building on the, uh, east side of the, uh, of the hotel, of the property into a two-level... of the property into a two-level building that will compensate for the rooms lost in reframing the interior of the main building and reconfiguring some other spaces into a gym and housekeeping. We are proposing that this be constructed in the traditional board and bat style. While this is a departure from the Spanish style of the property, it certainly is a style that was common to the era as it was used on Edward Louis' home in Ojai as well as many others. We feel it's a nice complement to the property and will help us break up the monotony of the plaster buildings and bring more character to the property. The same style building was actually on the original plans as a bungalow, so hopefully it will feel like it was always there. I think we can talk about this later, but I think, you know, in case you're not familiar with our group, we wanted to give you a brief background on each of us. Eric has had a home in Ojai since 1989. He's lived here with his family in the 60s at the Thatcher School where his father was a professor. He's an entrepreneur and conservationist. He established the Turtle Conservancy in Ojai 17 years ago, which works to protect turtles and tortoises from around the world and focuses on education and research. He's also had an esteemed career in New York where he's established longtime historic iconic hotels, the Maritime, the Bowery, the Ludlow, and also a few restaurants, the Park and the Waverly Inn. Warner has lived in Ojai for about 10 years before he moved to Carpenteria to be closer to his children's school. And he's worked in the restaurant business for most of his career and has owned and operated Los Angeles, some iconic Los Angeles staples that include Dominique's, Little Dom's, Tom Bergen's, the 101 Coffee Shop, and the recently opened Little Dom's in Seafood and Carpenteria. He and his partner and chef, Brandon Boudot, who also resides in Ojai with his wife Isabel, who owns the store Decor &amp; Co. Jeremy relocated to Ojai last year with his wife and 18-month-old son Ari. And he brings a wealth of real estate development and hospitality experience to our team. He's passionate about developing projects to preserve and celebrate a property's social, cultural, and historic significance. And he was part of a core team that led restoration projects in Chicago and New York, transferring landmark buildings into boutique hotels, both of which received a design preservation recognition at the highest national level. My family and I have had a house in Ojai since 2008 and we've lived in the historic Libby House since 2011 and have worked extensively on the property to maintain and restore it with the utmost care and respect. I've been working in the design and architectural world for the past 20 years. I was one of the founding partners of a firm called Commune and left to pursue new endeavors in 2015. While at Commune, we were awarded the Cooper Hewitt Smithsonian National Design Award for our body of work. And I've since started a new firm called Studio Shamsiri that has received numerous design awards and distinctions for our work over the last five years. The point I'm trying to make is that while we've all worked on large projects, we're not a large real estate development firm. We're incredibly passionate about this project and feel like it's in our backyard. We hope to create an experience that captures the essence of Ojai and allows visitors and locals to appreciate our beautiful downtown historic core. Concurrently, we hope to bring more foot traffic and revenue to local businesses while restoring and improving on the TOT tax and sales tax lost for the city since the closure of The Oaks. So, I think, you know, we really appreciate the opportunity to open up this dialogue with you at this time and as we wait for some of the other pieces of the process to come together. And we would welcome some preliminary feedback on our proposal. We recognize this is the first of a number of discussions. And I want to again thank you for your time and consideration and we look forward to moving this project forward together. So, we have some of the parking charts and diagrams that we can go through as your questions come up.
Yeah, I think some specifics on the parking changes that you are now proposing would certainly help not only the commissioners but all those folks out there in TV land that are watching.
Okay. Well, I think, I mean, the main thing that we did, our original plan, you know, we, the main lot, which on the lower right here on the screen, has, you know, it's a non-conforming lot because of the depth. And so, our original plan had 10 cars parked there to meet code. And so, since, you know, we went back and, you know, we would like to do kind of a stacked assisted parking that will allow 30 cars there and also have, we added an additional nine spots on Matilah Street here at the top of the screen. I think the areas that we were trying to remove are on Signal Street and Ventura Street. We removed some of the parking that, you know, you pull into from the street. So, the curb cuts are gone, which adds some more street parking there. And we wanted to rebuild the sidewalks there. But, and we've also purchased the lot, it's on Ventura Street 202 Ventura Street, which we have the capacity to fit 18 cars, I think, with assisted parking there. So, that's kind of the big differences is essentially, you know, what's on-site is a lot more than what we proposed the first time and then the addition of 202 Ventura Street.
And you're still, and you're still looking at parking on the north and south sides of the Beacon and Blue Building on West Ojai Avenue, but that is not for valet parking? That is self-guided parking?
That's actually a condition we're going to want to talk about.
Yeah, I mean, I think what the condition we have is that it's self-guided. I mean, I think, you know, from our perspective, I think it would be, it would help to have it be assisted parking. I think it makes more sense to have someone that knows the area drive the car and park it there and come back and you don't have a group in a car walking across the street. It's less people. But I think the condition right now is that, you know, it's more of a long-term parking as well. I think we would do an analysis of, you know, anyone that's coming to the hotel, if they're staying for a few days and they're not going to be using their cars, it's a good place to put it further away because they won't be accessing it. I think the lot's closer to the hotel we want to keep for the ins and outs, the daily ins and outs.
Okay, sir, I don't think you've introduced yourself as you stood up to speak. Or did you have something else that you wanted to say?
I'm sorry, I was just going to join in with Ramin to help.
This is Jeremy McBride.
I'm Jeremy McBride.
Okay.
To help answer some questions. And the planning commission and anyone else that has any specific feedback.
Yeah, those of us that have been on a tour know who you are, but not everybody in the building or out there in TV land knows who you are, so. Yeah, thank you.
Jeremy, could I ask a question?
Yes, Lucas.
Maybe even to help kind of guide that, because I think the parking is what I think it sounds like.
It's certainly a big consideration here.
Jeremy, could you walk through the parking as it evolved, I would say, from September to where we're at today?
Sure. Let's start with what Ramin was talking about earlier, which pertains to how we arrived to our uses. And the uses involve a consideration of how parking requirements are configured. We engaged StanTech, as mentioned. They prepared a study that incorporated our project description. Our project description, for the most part, incorporates all of the uses of the past. What's used in that is operational statistics of the hotel and evaluates if the proposed parking supply accommodates, in many cases, the anticipated parking demand. This was, in many ways, our program of consideration, understanding the constraints we already had with having underserved parking on the property. So, the biggest challenge we had is running into this is, one, operationally, how challenging the existing conditions were to the parking operation itself. That was a huge barrier in trying to get an understanding of how our uses could function while at the same time deliver the right-around of supply to accommodate the demand. So, that's why you see a drastic program change around how the parking is configured on-site. Initially, by looking at permit history, we thought a great option was to find nearby sites within a 500-foot radius and configure a parking operation in a way that accommodates parking safely off-site. We realized that probably wasn't the best idea mainly because of the circulation issues as well as the encumbrance issue that presents itself when you are dealing with leases in a community. So, we heard the feedback loud and clear back in September. We entered into an agreement to purchase a lot, as mentioned, directly north of our site, 202 North Ventura, currently a vacant lot. And that lot, you know, in many ways is an extension of our building. It's directly close, proximity's great, lots of efficiencies with that. So, with that addition and some of the exterior removal of parking that was, in many ways, a deterrent for the operation, we actually have increased parking supply as it relates to the planned revisions from September till this date. So, we went from 50 on-site spaces to roughly 58 between the direct proximity of the hotel. Now, it doesn't include considerations through the changes to the exterior parking of adding and re-establishing three spaces on the street as well as spaces that can accommodate parking in Port Casheer, about eight cars. So, 11 spaces in capacity have been created as a result of this change. In addition to the new lot of 18 spaces, creates a totally different situation for us where 69 total spaces exist for a site that only had 50 before. And for that reason, we're pretty enthused about where we landed. And I think this public process has allowed us to really think about the needs of the public as it relates to the impact of our site and probably ended up with a better result. Now, Beacon, I will say, the concerns we have around the conditions that were proposed, we actually believe in our experience of dealing with worldwide operations and include valet parking in urban, smaller communities, international communities. The biggest thing that we are facing with this is I would much rather have a managed parking operation than have our guests, our community stroll through the streets of Ojai trying to navigate where to park and how to find our site. And that's going to create more, given the perfect location of Beacon Coffee and that lot of 209 to 211 West Ojai, just not a conducive option for us. So, that's the big kind of concern that I think we all have is we would love to have the opportunity to at least evaluate trying that, trying a way in which we can use maybe perhaps at certain times of the day when there is more compression to have professionals manage or direct parking to allow for our guests' safety and our community's safety. That's one part of it. There's also been opposition about, just being transparent, about the idea of what we're calling assisted parking. And you can call it whatever you would like, but it is parking staff supporting the relocation and direction of vehicles entering our building. And when I say it's not as specific as valet, it isn't because we have a very unique parking operation in terms of supply available for guests and for short-term visitors. The opportunity we have with the parking operation, I think, in many ways, there's proven statistics around the differences between self- and managed parking in terms of efficiency that we believe with the increased parking and having it managed professionally by our staff, we will actually reduce impact on traffic, reduce impact on traffic and parking related to the impacting concerns that have been made available to us as well as provide a much more efficient way in which a guest can experience our property. So, those are the big things, Lucas, I think, around changes. I think overall, we ended up with, as I said, a better result than I thought we originally came in with. And I think the process helped us get there. And honestly, I think we have, again, more parking than we've had before and supporting uses that have always been there.
Okay, any other members of the applicant team wish to chime in before we go back and start asking questions of staff and applicants? And I apologize for asking a question. I should have waited. Looks like no and no, okay. Oh, if you do wish to speak, please introduce yourself and tell us.
I know that Ramin introduced me. My name's Eric Good and I just would like to say, having spent, you know, I lived here in the mid-60s when my father was a teacher at Thatcher School. And I came back and bought a house here in 1989 because of what you guys do and the people before you. And the point that I want to make is that I came back to Ojai because it's one of the few places that has not changed because of good civic planning and good zoning regulations. And I just want to say that I really appreciate the thoroughness of what you guys have done and what you do here and the legacy of people before you and why Ojai is what it is today. And I never wanted to do a business in Ojai. It was a place where I went to do exactly the opposite. And I just want to say that the real, you know, person that put this in my head to do something in Ojai was Joan Kempner, who sought me out and asked me if I would do something with her to do a performing arts building in Ojai. And that sort of put the seed in my head, oh, when the El Roblar came along, The Oaks, maybe this could be something that I could give back to Ojai and restore this hotel to be, you know, what it was. And so, I just wanted to just give you my history. I know Ramin kind of told you. And so, I've been here for over 35 years, so I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. Are we ready for questions, you think, Lucas?
We could do questions. We could open it up to the public.
All right, and I see we still have a drawing up on the screen that shows the new buildings, second floor in one case and then three other new buildings stick-built from the ground up, I guess, or modified. And I think all the commissioners have seen that picture before. So, maybe we could pull back, if we can pull back to where we have a gallery view of all the commissioners, is that possible yet? Well, we're still going to do Loud as Talker, I guess, okay. Well, let's go around the table then. Vice Chair Nolan, do you have questions for staff or for the applicant?
Yes, I do. I actually have a few questions to start. One of them, I didn't see any mention of the future staff that will be staffing the hotel, the parking, the restaurant, the event center, probably the pool, poolside area. And if you have an event, there may be more people than, you know, that are there typically during the day or evening. I'm wondering if you have a projected count of what that may be? And then, where are they going to be parking on the property or thereabouts? That's one of my first questions.
Okay.
No, there's two.
Hi, thank you for that question. I think on a preliminary level, there's a couple of things to consider. Number one, the actual stay pattern and uses of the building that we project for Ojai really heavily weigh in in terms of staffing. So, most of you know, if not, during the midweek, occupancy is quite low, 50% to 60% range on average, weekend 75%. That influences a lot of how labor will be considered and will be staffed at the property. So, there's a fluctuation of staff and there's a fluctuation of hours of operation. And we have a consideration of a certain amount of staff coming in during the day and certain amount of staff coming in at night. We have adequate parking supply, as mentioned, through the off-site lot where a lot of our staff will be parking for those hours. That lot is located at 209 through 211 West Ojai Avenue. And predominantly, we'll be supporting our staff. But a lot of it is consideration in terms of projections based on hours of operation, certainly, and the uses that we have available.
Do you have an estimated count? I mean, I wouldn't hold you to it. I know this is early on. You're still, you know, trying to get your permits, et cetera.
Sure.
But just projecting, you know, restaurant staff, event staff, you know, people that are hostesses at the front of the hotel or hosting valet parking folks, et cetera.
And housekeeping.
Yeah.
Housekeeping, yeah, just to kind of get an idea of like, well, how many cars and how would that eat into or take up spaces in that alternate parking location?
I understand, yeah. I don't think we have a real good idea yet. It's no more than what was there before, to be honest with you, in terms of the actual impact. Certainly, we have more uses, but they're dependent mainly on time of day. So, I don't have a really good answer for you if I was to guess right now based on a average, everyday consideration of how uses will. consideration of how uses will operate, I'd say probably 20, 20 or 25 spaces. And that depends certainly on where people live. We're hoping to hire a lot of people from the community. That's part of the idea of job creation that we've considered and you've seen in our proposal. Hopefully, if there are some more affordable options for people to have housing in the downtown core, we would love to welcome more people to stay and work and walk to work preferably. That's the goal. But certainly considerations would be of that nature.
Okay. I was kind of projecting.
Yeah, sure.
Somewhere in that ballpark myself, just, you know.
I understand.
Averaging it. But that'll help us as we continue to look at the parking. The other one is, I know you probably have it, but for some reason, I don't know, maybe it's my eyes, I could not see it, a call out for bicycle parking and where would that be and estimated how many bike spaces?
Well, I think we, one quick consideration, obviously you are likely aware of the mob shop that's directly next door. We are anticipating some sort of partnership in which we can allow for bike parking and some ride sharing options for our guests and bike rental options for our guests. So we haven't really formally contemplated how that would work, but we're in early stages of that discussion around accommodating a lot of green transportation options for our guests.
Okay, good. I mean, I do know that per our code, we require bicycle parking for commercial projects. So I'm assuming you'll have bike racks in addition to hopefully a partnership with a neighboring business.
Absolutely.
Okay. And then we'll see that on future plans. Okay, those are my beginning questions. I'll pass the time.
Very good. We'll do as many rounds as we need to, commissioners. Commissioner Lottis, you have questions for either staff or the applicant? Commissioner Lottis? Oh.
There we go. I had to unmute, sorry. I guess this is for staff. So a historical resource evaluation is in the process of being prepared, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And do we have, do you know when that's coming out? Or what, do you know what the, what was, what's the timeline and or process in terms of utilizing that? I guess we go to the Historic Preservation Commission and...
We'd need to go to the Historic Preservation Commission.
Okay. So we'll get input from them in terms of... All right. And is that dealing with the exterior, exterior and interior?
It's the exterior.
Okay, all right. Let me see. And the parking traffic study, that was a report or an evaluation that was, the study was funded by the applicant, is that correct?
That's correct. It was done by StanTech.
Right.
Do, do we have StanTech on?
We do, yes.
As well. So if there are any traffic or parking or parking demand analysis questions in terms of clarification, we have StanTech online as well.
Okay. But my follow-up question is really, the, so I appreciate the applicant having done that, but we, have we had any vetting or second peer review of this, or peer review of the StanTech report done as, with the city being the contracting agency?
If you're asking the question whether or not the city has independently...
Have we done a peer review of the StanTech study?
Yeah, independently hired a consultant to review that's under contract with the city? No. Have I reviewed it and did a thorough analysis of it? Yes.
Yes, but what are your traffic engineer credentials?
Zero.
Don't excuse my...
Yes, but...
I respect your abilities, but it has never been peer reviewed by an independent traffic engineering firm.
No.
May I ask if what the intent of the question is?
The intent of the question is to clarify who is paying for what and what's been done.
And have you read the report?
Yes, I did read the report.
Okay.
Commissioner Lottis, can I ask you a clarifying question?
Yes.
To your question. In the code, as a part of the TCO, the Thorough Fair Corridor Overlay, it identifies the requirement for a traffic study or even a traffic analysis in the case here. It doesn't identify whether there's an independent requirement or a peer review that's required. Also, within the code, it identifies within the historic resources aspect for the historic resources analysis, that peer review is required, that there is a specific process and it's laid out. They've met that requirement in terms of providing that information. Now granted, it was provided by StanTech, which is a consultant, and it's really kind of a, an opportunity for the commission to ask clarifying questions and as well as staff. At some point, staff has vetted out specific questions to StanTech throughout this process.
And if...
I do appreciate that. And there are solid reasons for peer review at a professional level done by, with people with the professional expertise. And I'm just, I just asked the question because I wanted, I did want, I just want to have it clarified about who is doing what and who's paying for it. So the historical evaluation report, who, that is getting peer review and that's?
Correct.
Okay, all right.
Right, that's, that's...
You know.
That's under contract with the city and the applicant is paying for it. So the city is...
We will be having environmental review for this. And so, you know, I can't evaluate, I've actually had some traffic engineering training, but, you know, I don't presume to be able to evaluate really properly. I'm not a professional. And I just think that to be sure of the validity of these studies that we are looking at, that a peer reviewer is always a good idea. That's just generally where I stand on that. But I just, I was only asking the question at this point to just get clarification. I'm not, I'm not saying that there's anything that I have seen that is, seems wrong or incorrect with the study that was submitted.
Okay.
Other than, I do have a, actually, I do have a question about that. If I can ask that. I do have a question about the baseline because the hotel was, when it was existing, had 46 hotel rooms. But the, the study, the StanTech study is claiming that they had, you know, they had, at one time, they had approval for 50 rooms. So they were using that as the baseline. But I'm not sure, baseline should be existing conditions. And existing conditions are 46 hotel rooms. So it is a question. I don't know the answer to it. I don't really know how to evaluate that myself. And that's another reason for second peer review or peer review. I'm sorry, I keep saying second peer, but no, just one peer review.
Commissioner Lottis, if I could, could the, could StanTech, could we get StanTech on? I'd like to have them talk a little bit about the, the report that they put together.
Ginger Anderson's on. She just needs to unmute.
Dennis.
And Dennis, okay.
Both Dennis and Ginger are on. Just, there they go.
Okay, welcome to the StanTech reps. Please tell us about the study that you did, why you used the baseline that you did, and how it would change if you considered 46 rooms as a baseline instead of 50, just among other things that you may wish to talk about. Thank you.
Let me add one, or let me add one note, too. I believe the weddings or the special events are above and beyond the baseline as well. But just, just if you can clarify what baseline is.
Good evening, can you hear me?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, chair members of the Planning Commission. This is Dennis Lammers, Senior Transportation Planner with StanTech. And I believe on the phone is Ginger Anderson as well, Senior Land Use Specialist and Planner. So with respect to the baseline, it doesn't really apply to the parking study because we're looking at two different parking calculations. One of the, is the parking requirement for the proposed project. And it has a little bit, of course, of the prior description. It goes back into a summary of what the project used to be. But with respect to parking requirements, we're only looking at the proposed project, which of course certain rooms, events, and restaurant with a public use component. With the traffic study, we do look at the historical use. And Ginger can probably expand on that a little bit more, is that our understanding is that the permitting of the hotel allowed for 49 rooms, of which 46 were, in recent history, were assigned as hotel room, and three were converted to spa treatment rooms. But historically, there were 49 rooms that we have used as a baseline. Could you add to that, Ginger?
Who spoke?
This is Dennis Lammers.
Yes, yes.
Well, Ginger.
And someone else spoke right after that.
She's there. Nope. Ginger, can you speak?
Can you bring her on screen for us?
Hi.
Ah, okay. Hi, Ginger. Oh, gone again.
She just needs to talk.
Oh, I see, yeah. We'll see, we'll see at least your name, Ginger, if you speak to us. Is there something you wanted to add to what Dennis had to say?
Everything's good.
Okay. Commissioner Lottis, were you, were you through with your first round of questions at least for applicant and staff?
Let me just, let's... Yes, I, yes, I am. Thank you.
Okay. Commissioner Trent?
Hello?
By the way, for the audience, I tend to call on...
Can anyone hear me?
Oh, there you are. Very good.
I'm terribly sorry. This headset is new and still giving me problems. I didn't have much to add to what Dennis said. We did have, I did look at the permit history and I did see that there were 49 rooms with three that had been converted to spa treatment rooms. And in terms of the event space, what we went back to is a fire department inspection report from quite some time ago that denoted that there was a ballroom. And so in my, in my estimation, that was where we got to, to the ballroom situation or to the event space. So there's, it's a, it's a fire department review letter from 1966, and it talks about an exit sign on the east wall of the banquet room. It talks about several other areas, including the flamingo room. And it talks about the flamingo room having a stage and a jukebox and too many extension cords for live music next to the stage. So what we start to do is cobble together a story of all of the uses that were, that were there over time. I'm happy to share that letter with you guys now or in between now and the next hearing. But that's, that's where we kind of come together with, with kind of repainting the picture here. So it's a, I'm sorry, it's a 1972. It's kind of funny, there was a very long list of building violations happening at the time. But they do talk about all the uses. So that's where we, we came up with that.
That's where you came up with the purported required parking for the event space?
Correct.
Okay. Yeah, I think that if you could provide Lucas with that, I'm sure it would be useful to have.
Sure.
I think part of the story we're trying to tell as well is that the baseline is extremely inefficient. And part of the exercise we spent so much time on in telling you today that a lot of the reimagined uses that were introduced from the past, as well as reconfiguration and additional parking sites purchased to accommodate the demand that's been determined by an outside consultant, is part of, part of the process today. And hearing some more direct feedback from, from the council and from the community will allow us to do some further research around the concerns that people have. But I would, I would certainly welcome some more specific feedback to allow us to be able to contemplate that.
Okay, well, I have traditionally called upon the other commissioners to speak first, and I'll finish up with that, starting with the vice chair and then the other commissioners in order of, let's call it seniority on the commission. And so next up is Commissioner Trent. Do you have questions for staff or for the applicant?
I have questions for both. I'll start with the applicant. You mentioned in your proposal that all of the guests will come into the hotel first, and then they'll be directed to parking facilities. Will that, I'm assuming it's a valet service or some sort of managed parking, is that going to be included in the fee of the hotel? Do guests have to pay separately for that?
Great question. So the first part of the question, guests will arrive, guests who are staying at the hotel will be required to park their car at the facility through a parking attendant. So in other words, a valet parking person, for those who understand that operation. So that will be included in the price of the room. And depending on your stay and what you're there for, you might be guided to park at some of our other onsite locations as guided, as guided staff. So if you're there for a meeting, or you're there for a coffee, or you're there for a meal, depending on the time and duration, you might be guided based on the operational needs of the business as well as how we would potentially optimize the parking supply that we have. So depends on the time of day, depends on the actual intent of the stay and visit, but certainly we'll have people and staff available to guide.
Okay. And then, so it'll be included for guests?
Correct.
Which is great. How about visitors or people attending the restaurant?
This, if you will, right now, how we've contemplated is if you are a outside guest attending a restaurant, a reservation, most likely right now, as is contemplated, you'll be at least somewhat validated, depending on the type of stay you have. But for the most part, we would love to offer some complimentary depending on uses and space capacity. For the most part, it will be some validation.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, you know, looking at your experiences that you all have, which is, which is very impressive, you're all from, you know, you have experience with high-density cities, you know, where parking is a premium. So I'm assuming you've dealt with this type of situation before, where you've had a project that you're working on without adequate parking. Usually in that type of situation, there's, you know, people have to pay for parking at some level. So I'm glad to hear that you're including the valet in the guest rooms and you'll have some sort of mechanism to, you know, charge people for parking when they come in as a guest or restaurant or whatever. I think that's important. Because otherwise, you're going to have people that don't want to pay, and they're going to say, I don't want valet service. And then do you guys have a plan for those folks? Are they still able to attend the hotel?
Sure. So the first part of the question, I would say, the reason why we've considered offsite parking... the reason why we've considered off-site parking as a consideration is to offer an option for people that don't want to pay a fee for parking, that are visiting with us. So we do have a lot, as mentioned, that's defined, that we would offer as a self-park option. Also, there was a lot of feedback, as you know, around the the type of parking operation that we're proposing doesn't necessarily relate to other uses in the area, and that is certainly a fair comment. But a reasonable person could see, in looking at the site conditions and the operation that we're proposing, is that a managed parking is far better than having people self-park, especially with a very uncontained and uncontrollable lot. So, we're sensitive to the idea of having a huge, pretentious parking staff swarm the entrance of the hotel. And instead, we want to have an approachable, guided staff experience where people have choice. So, those are the things that we're really thinking about that have worked in other municipalities that we've had experience in, that have the same sensitivities around operational concerns with something that doesn't fit the, you know, way of doing things in a certain community. But we also want to learn too. And that's what also assisted parking allows us to do, is learn around the patterns of parking and how we can optimize. Frankly, we might realize we might need more parking at certain times of the day, during certain times of week, and we would have to accommodate that. And that's part of the process with having a managed system. You actually have statistics and data to be able to analyze and make adjustments to accommodate demand in a way that you can't do in a self-parking operation. So, data is helpful, data can be shared. We've discussed already with staff ideas of how we can use that traffic data to help improve and use as a model for other operations that have similar issues. But at the end of the day, manage is better than self-parking. Especially when you're talking about, so I know I'm going on a rant here, but the idea of the exterior of a building that has a lot of exposed parking is just not conducive for a business of our liking. So, it's a long answer.
No, it's okay. So obviously, you'll have two options. So you'll have the valet option, and you'll have the self-serve, the self-park option. Now, is the self-park option only available when you have like overflow events? When you don't have enough parking onsite?
Ideally, yes. Again, I think the experience we're imagining, which you see in certain situations, and for those who've had a parking garage experience probably in the last year, someone stops you and says, "What are you doing here?" And that person says, "Okay, well, I'm here for a visit. I'll be an hour." Okay? They will tell you exactly where to park, because they've thought about where to place cars based on availability and duration of stay in advance, and will guide you to a spot to park. That's kind of how the experience will be. If you're an overnight guest, you will be in a, likely, as Ramin had mentioned earlier, a probably a secure private lot that is doing tandem parking. Because that guest, based on the length of stay, might have a car that's less accessible than a car that's more accessible based on their stay. So, it certainly depends on the type of stay, but you will be guided to accommodate your need. And we will be sensitive to, and the point I was trying to make is this, we're going to be sensitive to people in the community that want to enjoy the experience that don't want to be turned off by a valet fee or valet parking operation that's too pretentious.
Right. And then, at the 209-211 West Ohio Avenue Parking Facility, so that's going to be pseudo overflow parking, the self-parking option, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. And that one will be, so they'll come into the hotel, and then they'll be directed to go park over there, and then they'll have to walk back across Ohio Avenue. Is that correct?
That is certainly something that has been proposed. We've been talking about with staff. We would prefer to manage that operation, meaning having an attendant at the location, receiving cars and guiding traffic.
Have you thought about the possibility of some sort of shuttle that would shuttle people back and forth, like some sort of electric shuttle?
It's a great idea. We will look into that. We were really contemplating using that overflow lot where we have situations, certainly where we have longer-term stays. That way, we can free up available parking supply onsite. The other, sorry, the other idea is to use that for evening events. That's where we have a little bit more capacity, and most likely when the hotel is going to be full. So evening events would allow us to guide people to that off-site space, traditionally when there isn't a lot of parking demand in the area.
Okay, that's great. So considering that off-site location, let's say I have a longer-term stay. My car is over there for a few nights. Is there going to be security over there? Is there going to be cameras? Is there fencing? Do you guys have the protocol for that?
Great question. We're going to have security, great insurance, and proper fencing and signage to accommodate the needs of the parking operation. Also, that's one advantage of sealing off the parking on the perimeter. There's a lot of issues with access to the site and guest room access where the parking currently exists. And that's another example of why we want to relocate the exterior parking surrounding the parcel.
Awesome, awesome. Thank you. I appreciate that. Now, I have a couple of questions for the city, if that's all right.
Go ahead, John.
Do we know when the last time we had the in-lu fee addressed?
Please clarify. You mean in terms of the last time that someone paid the in-lu fee, or the last time that...
No, I apologize. The last time it was looked at, the municipal code, was it 2004? I saw a reference to 1992.
It's been, it's previous to 2004. It hasn't been updated, I want to say, since the 90s.
Okay.
However, I would also identify and clarify that there's a calculation that's done on an annual basis. So in the staff report, it identifies what that in-lu fee is this year. And I think that points to the $7,555 and change.
And if I'm not mistaken, I believe that according to Section 10-13.01, the purpose of the in-lu fee was to provide for off-site parking facilities within the downtown area, and the funds were to be used to build off-street parking facilities. So my second...
Purchase-build, yes, or a combination of the two, yes.
So my second question is, if we have a need for the in-lu and we have funds in the in-lu, have we looked at any sort of parking facilities development?
We're currently, I mean, yes. The city is currently looking at options for private parking that could become public, or lots that could end up being developed. That's always being looked at. But I'll have to also identify that the in-lu fee account is low. These parking lots and the development of parking requires a fairly large amount of cash and funds to do that, right? So it takes kind of an incremental aspect of receiving those funds over time, and then using those funds in kind of an exerted effort towards one or maybe multiple options.
Okay, cool. And then, that brings up a second question. If the owner of the lot at 209-211 West Ohio Avenue decides to sell the property, and they decide to terminate the lease with the hotel, I think the current proposal says that the hotel will have to operate with less rooms? Am I correct?
Not necessarily less rooms. It's more of addressing the use aspects as it currently exists. So, right now, you're seeing two different off-site parking lots. The 202, I think it's 202 North Ventura?
Yeah.
As well, which has the 18 spaces. And then, the Beacon Lot, which is 209 to 211, which has twenty, if I recall correctly, 20 spaces up until 5:00 PM. And then, after 5:00 PM, which is really when the use is there, closed up shop, it becomes more of a full access to that site, which is 51 spaces.
Right, but I guess my question is, would the hotel have to diminish the amount of rooms that they can offer for guests to accommodate for the parking decrease?
There's currently 40 spaces onsite, as well as the 18 spaces that you're seeing for the parking lot to the north, which they control, meaning the hotel controls. The Beacon Lot is, for all encompassing purposes, also controlled by the hotel as well.
Just to add, sorry, Lucas. It's a, we added the lease agreements for each of the parcels in the package.
Yep, and that's there as well.
And that's a, so the condition to kind of think about is it's currently a 20-year lease held by one of the members of ownership. And the member has the first right to buy the property if the current owner decides to sell.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, cool.
It's not, it's still, it doesn't totally solve what your concern is, but we do have a lot of time and have a really strong option to buy the property if we'd like to.
Okay. And then, another question for city. Obviously, there's parking around the property that is potentially being looked at as overflow parking or whatnot. Do we have any time limits on how long people can park on the street? Is that enforced currently today in downtown?
There are limitations. The enforcement is sporadic at best. I know that there are times where it is enforced, but more often than not, it hasn't been enforced. So there are, I mean, in certain lots, there are one-hour parking, two-hour parking limitations.
On the street, it tends to be overnight parking is okay. But again, just like we discussed in the first case tonight, that is public parking. It doesn't count against private parking requirements.
Yeah, and I should, I mean, to Commissioner Trent's point, and to kind of illustrate a piece that Jeremy and I think Ramin had talked about earlier, there currently, if you look at, like, for instance, Ventura Street, that entire stretch is, currently has pull-in parking or head-in parking. With this proposal, that would remove all of that head-in parking and create a curb and create additional parking on the street. Would not be limited to the hotel, would be made accessible to the public. So it's made, and if you look at the sum of the whole, it's a plus-three in terms of providing additional parking for the public. That's something that staff has identified as a credit to the hotel in their efforts to kind of provide a more efficient use of parking onsite, as well as offsite. And I think the applicant is agreeable to that as well.
Absolutely, yes.
We heard from the applicant at one point about the so-called Circle Drive parking. Eight or nine spaces in that circle that's right in the front of the, proposed front of the hotel. I didn't hear that mentioned. If we've got 31 spaces at the southeast corner of the property, nine on the south side of Matilah, 18 at 202 North Ventura, and eight, or I thought I heard nine, spaces on the Circle Drive, then that's a different and bigger number again. So I'm not sure what we're counting here.
That could be added as a credit. The tricky aspect is, you know, within our provisions within the code, it identifies hard numbers as it relates to the hotel. And then, any of the ancillary uses are then at determination by the director, by the way the code reads. However, in the circumstances of what we're looking at here, knowing that the entire project as sum of the whole is also reviewed by the commission, there needs to be some sort of an understanding and agreement to how those parking spaces are addressed. The proposal that I had laid out within the staff report talked about those eight spaces also being credited. But there's a bit of a, I'm sorry, I don't mean to kind of digress on this, but I wanted to just kind of hammer home something here. So there's onsite, or I'm sorry, the parking perimeter, there's a total net increase of parking to the tune of three for the public. Onsite, there are the opportunity for up to eight spaces to be provided within that Circle Drive. I'm also seeing that as an opportunity for a credit. And in doing that, there's still a net loss that I'm seeing during the day in terms of the uses that the applicants have shown. That's where I'm seeing an opportunity for the in-lu, which I think Commissioner Trent is somewhat getting to, to a certain degree. That in-lu would then be something that would be paid to the city and then would go within that impact fee account.
The escrow fund, if you will.
Yeah, and it could be used to purchase, purchase or build parking somewhere offsite, obviously. And that's, the city sees that as a significant opportunity for certain. We are actively in conversations with other entities to either purchase or build parking. But we're also looking at how we fund that as well. And this would be one of those ways.
Okay, Commissioner Trent?
Yeah, I think you answered my questions. I think just one more point. You know, another way to raise the money needed for that type of project is to have parking enforcement to issue tickets when people stay longer than they're supposed to.
That's an excellent point.
So, that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bennett?
I'm sorry I'm coming into this relatively late. I did get the tour that everyone else got. I had just joined the commission. And so, your discussion earlier about people who are concerned about this is not Ojai if we have valet parking or whatever it is, is not something I'm... I mean, I've heard that, but I didn't see the presentation, didn't see the conversation around it at the time. And what I don't have, and I guess it would be helpful, is an idea of, you know, I've got an idea of what the hotel will look like, what the rooms will look like. Although that's not material at this point. And I think we're all trying to make sure we don't light a fuse that blows up on all of us, and that is, we have a nightmare here. It isn't working as a model. But, you know, it's funny, as you look at the, on page five of 16, the proposed parking demand, the hotel has 16. My first thought was, okay, 14 for the restaurant. I mean, we haven't got a restaurateur like this who's going to require only 14 parking spaces. But then I realized, okay, well, there are going to be people in the house who are eating there. And event space, 23. Are you kidding? You've got a room there that could fit 150? Then I realized the same thing's true. It would be helpful to get an idea of what you're envisioning this to be like on a, say, a June Saturday. Not a June Saturday when the music festival is operating, but a June Saturday where you have a wedding in your event space. Have you, I assume, worked up rules about, or proposals, or thoughts about requiring anyone who's going to take the event space also to take half the rooms in the hotel? Or things like that?
Some block of rooms.
Some block of rooms, which makes these numbers, which on the face of them, look crazy. Because you're saying, well, you know, you're not going to live with a restaurant with only 14 cars. You can't, no, you've got people from the house. You've got the same thing in the event space and so on and so... What is this hotel going to be looking like on a June Saturday? And then, with a wedding going on there, and what's the vibe going to be like? You know, when do people arrive, and so on and so forth? And why is it not going to make the, you know, be the tipping point that causes the town to be uninhabitable?
So, great question. I'll answer the technical one first.
Could we answer the broad vision one first? Because that, you know, I'm still trying to get an idea. What is this hotel? You know, and, you know, Walter's going to have a great restaurant. I'm sure I'm going to want to go there all the time. But, you know, it's not very big. It's only got 61 seats. And so, you know, da-da-da-da-da. I want to get some idea. When this thing is working, what's it working like, and how do we get a sense that we're going to be able to live with? At the moment, 78 parking places plus another 11, or 89 parking places, which appears to be a little short of the 98, which is, the program is going to require. But then we do have, you know, we do have public parking on the streets and things like that, and all the stuff, the timing of when things are going to be. I had one person grab me and say, "Oh, you know that Beacon Place, they're never going to be able to put all the cars you're going to put there, because, look at it on a Saturday morning, it's all parked up." Well, okay, Saturday morning is one thing, but, you know... Well, okay, Saturday morning is one thing, but, you know, how about Saturday night? You know, there's nobody there. Coffee shops shut down. So, you know, part of this, I, I'm just looking for the, for the, for how you make it work. And, because I think what we all want to do, and the owners that want to do this more than anybody, is have something that works and have the people in town not be frustrated by the fact they've unleashed this, this problem on us. And I certainly want, want that to be the case. I want the amenity of the hotel and the, and the event space and the restaurant and the bar. And I, and I want it to be one where the impacts are because of the, because of the fit of a hotel and an event space and a restaurant, where they all work. So, I, I don't know who does that. It would be helpful to know.
I'll say one thing, and I'd welcome any of the others to, to share their vision for what that should be. But I want to first start by addressing it in a way that it's a very complex solution because you are considering uses and a way of operating that hasn't really been welcomed so far. So we are contemplating in many ways, how do you provide everything to all of the needs of the business, including the stakeholders of the community and people who want to visit? And how do you do that in such a way that allows for these uses to work in a compatible way at all times? And so the vision is democratic access, where anyone can come and visit around the times in which we operate, that allows for people to come. And we do have ratios calculated, you know, in terms of what you talked about, Commissioner Bennett. You know, we have contemplated that a big core part of the hotel is going to be for guests who reserve rooms. And that's going to be amenity to those guests who are staying. And that's really the only way today, based on code, we can make it work. Part of the discussion we've had for a year, and the better part of three, has been trying to figure out the right approach around how we solve the numbers problem. And every time we've attempted to do that, we've gotten a lot of feedback around the constraints that exist. So in a perfect world, we'd love to have all uses open to community in a way that would be welcomed at all times. But there are constraints that are realistic that we have to consider. That aside, I think what we've been able to work through, through this process, is an experience that can be accessed by all. We do have a certain amount of priority for outside guests that we will welcome for people that are not staying at the hotel, that is compatible with our hours of operation and the amount of parking we have. And we're taking it seriously because it's an important consideration around the concerns of the community.
I was just going to add one more thing.
Yeah, sure, please, 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 yeah.
No, but this is completely not technical, but I just want to make a, a, a point that's really important. We're, the guests in the hotel are the closest people impacted by what you're just talking about, the food and beverage. And the ethos will only work in, in the hotel if it's complimentary, these things. So if someone's sleeping in a room and they're listening to a wedding, this hotel does not work. We're the closest people impacted, right? Not the neighbor down the street, not Ojai. And, and I know this because I run hotels. And I know that the, the worst thing you can do, and I've had this happen, where I leased out a restaurant in my hotel and they played the music too loud. And then no one in the hotel could sleep. We're the closest, you know, we're, we have 50 rooms of people sleeping. And so all of this, you know, your, your question about the restaurant or a bar or a small wedding, it can't impact the people sleeping in the, in the hotel. That's our core business. So we have to be sensitive for selfish reasons, that we don't let this thing become what you just said. You know, we, you know, it turns into something that doesn't work. And so I, I would just say to you, and this is not a technical answer, that the ethos that we create on this property has to all be complimentary. We would be sabotaging the hotel if we had some rowdy bar or, you know. So I just want to, I don't know if I'm answering your question.
Well, you, you, you are and you're not. There's, there's one other piece in that is, if you're staying in the hotel, and I've stayed in hotels where everybody got drunk and, and you couldn't fall asleep because your, your room was over the bar. It's terrible. But you can, you can arrive there, be at the event, and everyone's copacetic, the people staying in the hotel. But the people in the community have got a nightmare of traffic problems and parking problems and, and other, and other, other restaurants in the area have, have problems with those issues. And I'm, I'm, I'm sort of giving you a softball to, to hit, to say, well, they all work together. And yes, we've taken into consideration, of course, we'll have the requirement of buyout of rooms where that's how you get down to 20, 23 parking spaces for a wedding of 120 people is that 80% of the people are staying in the hotel. So you don't get a double count. And, and, you know, but I'm still, I'm looking at the other piece I don't know. There was a very nice looking terrace off of the restaurant. What's that going to be used for? Is that going to be special event territory as well? And, you know, are there?
Wait, I'm sorry, there, there's one kitchen. There's just basically two zones, two zones where the restaurant, you know, where, one's a breakfast zone and one's more of a sort of evening zone.
So the restaurants are, are not working at the same time? It's either dinner restaurant or daytime breakfast lunch?
Yeah, but there's one kitchen, so it's not really two restaurants.
No, but there was also a terrace. It was a, a piece of ground off of the restaurant, which looked like a wonderful place to do an outdoor event. And I just was wondering, is that going to be part of the mix as well? And is that part of your formula?
Yeah, sorry, that, that's intended to be part of the restaurant. So I don't, we don't, I don't think it's going to be part of the events.
Oh, so the, the restaurant count that we're looking at here includes any tables that are moved out there?
Yeah, we, I think all of our counts are gone, you know, by, by the code. I think everything we did was by the, the Stanton ran their numbers by the code. So I think you know better than I do.
Are you talking, speaking about the terrace?
On the, on the east end.
On the east side?
On the east side of the restaurant.
That's like just a, that's outdoor dining for the restaurant.
Right, right. Okay, and so those are counted in the restaurant numbers?
Absolutely.
All right, great.
Yeah, and I think, you know, to, to answer your other question, I think the simple answer is that if someone is having an event at the hotel, I think we anticipate they're going to get, get most of the rooms. It's just, it's too small a space. It's not a big enough hotel to have outside events with people that aren't staying there. So, and I think that's, the parking numbers will kind of reflect that. You know, and I think our parking capacity is a lot higher in the evening. You know, I think Beacon closes at two, and I think the store closes at five. So, you know, that lot, that gives us 30 more spaces in the front. We have 20 spaces in the back for the entire day.
Thank you.
And, and Commissioner Bennett and the Warner Bank, that 14 count for the restaurant, that's based on code. That's based on the square footage of that terrace and the restaurant.
It's both.
That's code, so that's based on 50% outside guests and 50% hotel guests.
Thank you.
And just, and another question to answer your clarification point on the event space, how we arrived to that number of 12, oh, sorry, 23 in that case? That accounted for the event requirements based on the Stanton calculation, understanding that 75% of that guest attendance is going to be people who are staying in the hotel. So to answer your question, what Eric had confirmed and, and Ramin had confirmed, the primary user of the event space is a hotel guest. There will be a certain amount of people, practically speaking, who come in.
Numbers of the community that are friends, of course, yeah.
So that's a real practical consideration, that we can't say only hotel, registered hotel guests can use the event space. It's unrealistic. That's why we came up the ratio of 75% primary hotel guests using the event space, understanding outside community would be likely, or visitors from the outside would likely be attending events as well.
Thank you.
Oh, Kathy's raising her hand, Chair.
Which Kathy?
Commissioner Nolan.
Commissioner Nolan, Vice Chair Nolan. Yes, you have a question?
Yeah, yes, I do. This gets back, continuing with the parking questions. This is in regards to the lot, the 209-211 West Ojai Avenue. So in the day, apparently you've got 20 spaces and after 5:51. So my concern was, you know, I had asked about staff and we said, well, and we're guestimating here, this is, you know, early in the game, 20 to 25 staff people. So essentially, if that was per shift, if you had a day shift and a night shift, that would be taking off all your day shift, your day parking at that lot. So I have a concern about that. But I also have a, I know Commissioner Trent asked some questions about it. I just want to make sure I understood this correctly. So as far as that lot goes, you would be managing it? And I think you said you would have fencing? Is that true? And then would you have lights? And I believe in the report it said it may be accessible, like, let's say you needed your car at 1 o'clock in the morning. In other words, would there be like potential activity, lights, sound, et cetera, 24 hours a day potentially?
I, I don't, I don't think, lights is not a very practical. Well, the first question, I want to, I want to also, I was just re-looking at my notes to the question. And I believe, I believe this is a follow-up. But I, I do think the hotel parking demand and the city's parking requirements already accounts for staff. So I want to make sure that's, that's clear, that the demand that we have arrived to already accounts for staff. So that's the first point to make mention to. The second point on the Beacon Lot, to the extent it, it makes sense. I don't think we have a real understanding now. I mean, there's general conditions around what a parking operation would require for valet or self-park services. There's general insurance requirements. But to the extent the landlord allows and it doesn't impact the existing use, we will do whatever we can to provide safety for our guests and visitors.
I had a concern too about the neighbors.
There are lights already there as well, sorry.
Directly, what would that be to the?
I'm sorry, you said there are lights on the Beacon Parking Lot, front and back?
Yes, currently there are lights on the property.
I would also like to just identify, I've had conversations with the neighbors, the residential neighbors across the, the wash there to the south and to the west.
On Topa Topa.
Correct.
Yeah.
They've, they, they were asking specifically about lighting to ensure that there wasn't going to be additional lighting than what was already provided there.
Well, dark scars, dark skies says you can't put light on somebody else's property already, so.
And, and also Commissioner Nolan, what staff is suggesting on that parcel is that we don't manage it, correct, Lucas? That that is self-park only, non-managed. We would like to have the option to manage it because we think it would be a better end result for us and the community and our guests. So that, that's why we questioned that one condition that staff.
Okay, so that's to be determined, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Anything more, Vice Chair Nolan?
Yeah, so, so my question about staff being included, is that correct, Lucas? The staff's included in the count?
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't call out staff specifically. Instead, it, it puts it in all one encompassing parking requirements. So that include, that would include staff here. Staff was called out specifically, it would identify that within the code, which it does not.
Okay, okay, so per each item, so, you know, like was this hotel? The demand is 61, so a percent of that is for staff. Likewise with the restaurant and the event space? If I'm understanding.
Correct, correct.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Can I just add also that, you know, this, this has been a hotel for, what, 100 years here? And anticipating there's now going to be problems, I think it's, it's short-sighted because we're actually coming here trying to really figure out how exactly this is going to be even better than it was. And historically, that spot has had no more than 50 spaces. It's had a historical shortfall of 34 spaces. We're talking now with our plan of having a shortfall of only six spaces to meet current standards. So I think we are, we are at a better place historically than it's ever been. I think that's important to point out.
Yeah. All right, Commissioner Bennett, were you, were you finished with questioning for the moment?
Yes.
Okay. For those who, who don't know me well, I'm Steve Quillisi. And I am by trade and experience a physicist used to dealing with hard data. I don't mean to be unsympathetic to any particular point of view, but I do like to deal with data. And you spoke of, you spoke of guided parking. Could you please explain what you mean by that first?
Sure. There's this concept called assisted parking. And there's a concept called valet parking, valet attendant parking. Valet is when an individual was to get your car, take it to a safe location and park the vehicle. Assisted parking is where a parking attendant staff will greet you and guide you based on where you're, based on the intent of your stay while you're there, will decide what to do and offer you a parking solution. So that would be either coming to.
Okay, so a guest, assisted or guided means the guest or patron stays in the car and parks presumably somewhere where a valet says you ought to park?
Correct.
Okay.
Including that, the mention of the port of cashier section of the area that we talked about earlier.
Okay. Now, I, I'm trying to figure this out. Well, maybe you can just help me with this. We have 30 or 31 spaces in the southeast corner here of the property, the existing parking lot, which according to this drawing, A100 is going to have some tandem parking or packed in by the valets and moved as necessary to retrieve cars.
Correct.
All right, there are nine spaces that I can see on the south side of Matilah Street. It's head-in parking like the, the current configuration has along either Ventura or Signal. Who parks there? Who is actually behind the wheel of a car that parks in those nine spaces? Is that a valet or is that a guided guest or a guided patron? Meaning someone who's coming for something at the hotel but not staying in a hotel room?
Sure. All of the, let's call it the, 31, 40 spaces that we have in our control, okay? Between 202 North Ventura and the 31 spaces onsite, those will be for guests that are staying either overnight or for a duration that a valet attendant decides.
You said 40, but actually 30, you've got 31 in the south, southeast corner. You've got nine along the south side of Matilah, and you've got 18 on the north side of Matilah. So that's actually 58 spaces so far, not counting whether you park eight or nine in the Circle Drive. There could be 66 spaces. But my question is, who parks there? Is it a valet or is it a guest or patron who has gotten some advice from a valet?
Sure, all of the onsite parking, the 58 spaces you mentioned, are going to be guided through a valet attendant. And park the vehicle.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm confused by the word guided then. Who is behind the wheel when a car pulls into one of those 66 spaces?
It's a, a valet attendant will be likely behind the wheel of the car. However, however, the only complicated answer to that is because depending on the time of day, the purpose of stay, how many spaces are available onsite, we might say to that guest, okay, well, why don't you park back here? Because it's a light day, business is slow, you might want to go around the corner and park.
Okay, but in general, that's valet parking on the block that the hotel sits on and at 202 North Ventura.
Correct, anything within a range that we can control, yes.
Okay. And then if you have a large event, then you're going to have your valets suggest to people at the moment or maybe drive the cars? I don't think we've determined that yet. And take the cars and park them either in front of or behind 209-211 West Ojai?
Yes, as a primary option again.
You'd prefer to have the valet do it.
Correct.
I can, I can see an advantage there in that there's likely more than one person in the car when the car arrives at the hotel. And so you would have fewer people crossing Ojai Avenue if it's just the valet than if you have a couple or a family or whatever. I, I understand that part. Something else I would like to, anyway, so I come up with, with 86 spaces.
Correct.
The, the three, and, and I don't know how you got three spaces on-street that were recovered because it looks like to me about, well, I don't know, four on the Ventura side, Ventura Street side. well, I don't know, four on the Ventura side, is it Ventura Street side, and two or three on the, on the Signal Street side. But those don't count because that's public parking. They don't count against your requirement. So what I see is you have, you have eighty-six spaces, not counting two oh nine and two eleven West Ojai, okay?
And not counting the eight in the front.
And, and I'm curious now from staff, this table on page five, where did those numbers come from? Where did the requirement for ninety-eight spaces come from?
Yeah, you, you're talking about the hotel, which is sixty-one spaces with the fifty.
And fourteen, the restaurant, and twenty-three event space totals to ninety-eight.
Right.
And, and if I look over on the left side of that table where it says all-day parking, that looks to me like sixty-six spaces. And then thirty-one more, or a total of ninety-seven spaces.
Well, hold on, you're talking about all day, including the restaurant, which is the Hotel Ouroblor onsite at forty? That's forty spaces that are being provided and then.
Yeah, I suspect if we have two restaurants there, there may be times when they are both operating. I don't know, and I don't know that it can be restricted by the city that a restaurant can only operate, say, after three P M or before three P M or whatever. Um, but I'm trying to understand where the numbers came from.
Sure, this is, these are numbers that, that we had talked, meaning staff and the applicant had talked about in terms of arriving at what you're seeing here today. In addition to that, recognizing that there's likely to be a, a certain um, threshold of individuals that are going to be eating where they're also staying. So there's a, a reduction to that. And StanTech had provided calculations for that to show that reduction. I think that's where, that's where you're seeing um, an inherent understanding. And I'd almost like StanTech to, to respond to some of that, some of those pieces, because it's somewhat technical. And they're applying certain um, logic, and then they're looking at.
If, if there are standard practices in the traffic management and parking management
manuals.
Genres or manuals or whatever, I, I accept that. Um, and I misspoke. I meant to say there are eighty-six, eighty-six spaces during the day that I can count, onsite and offsite being on the front side of Beacon. And there are then a hundred and seventeen if you count the backside of Beacon, and if you believe there are thirty-one parking spaces back there. And I would like to hear from the applicants about how did you come up with thirty-one spaces on the backside? I have driven over that property a couple of times. It doesn't have any lined spaces on it, so I was unable to count and verify for myself that there's thirty-one more spaces behind the building. Can you help with that?
Sure, there's twenty in the back, and there's thirty-one in the front.
Now, I think it's twenty in the front.
No, it's thirty-one.
Near Ojai Avenue and thirty-one in the back?
No.
There's more in the, there's more in the front.
There's thirty-one in the front.
Can we pull the exhibit up, or do you reference the exhibit?
All right. I'm happy to be wrong, please enlighten me.
Yeah, the, the front has more spaces than the back.
Okay, how did you come up with twenty in the back?
Because there's ten against the building, and then there's room for ten on the back. We're going to re-stripe everything, so it's there. But we measured the ten parking spaces that are touching the building.
I was, I was hoping it was something like that. You had an overhead shot of it, and you know how big a parking space is.
Yeah. Yeah, so there's thirty-one spaces in the front, and then there's ten against the building on the back, and ten on the, on there. Also, we didn't take into consideration anything on the side of the building, but those are parallel spaces. I think you get three or four more cars on the side of the.
Okay, and the thirty, the thirty-one in front is, is not completely available during the day. Only twenty of the thirty-one is available during the day.
The rear, correct.
Okay.
I know, not, none of, actually, none of the thirty-one during the day in the front. It's, it's, I think Beacon closes at two.
Okay, maybe I misread the report. I thought it said on the Ojai Avenue side of the building.
No.
Okay.
The twenty in the back are available there.
That's not correct.
So. So the twenty in, the twenty in the backside are available twenty-four hours a day. And then after five P M, you add thirty-one spaces on the front, so-called front side of the building as available to, to guests and patrons. Okay. So I get a hundred and seventeen spaces. And I see in this table that the requirement is for ninety-eight. So I'm trying to understand why we're having a discussion about parking and lieu fees.
I think it's because we have a shortfall during the day.
During the day.
When we don't have the thirty-one in the front.
During the day, you have, you have eighty-six spaces.
If you count those eight.
In the portage.
We're not, we're not counting those eight.
They're on your drawing, so I'm counting them for the moment. So you've got eighty-six spaces. Is that ninety-eight in the table? Is that ninety-eight space requirement and all-day requirement? Or, I mean, because we've already said.
Eighty-four.
It's eighty-four, but, but we're not, we're not counting the eight in the front in our calculations because we haven't, they don't, they're not formally counted towards our parking.
Is there something in the code that says those spaces cannot be used?
You're talking about the eight in the front?
The eight in the front.
Now, we, staff as well as the, as the commission can include those as a part of this. So yes, there's nothing in the code that says that they're exclusively prohibited.
Okay. So that's eighty-six. Thirty-one, nine, eighteen, and eight is, is eighty-six spaces.
Yeah, correct.
What is the daytime requirement? I see a ninety-eight here, but is that?
Four.
Eighty-four.
It's eighty-four.
Eighty-four.
Yeah, but that's where, that's where we have this discrepancy of six spaces, is what we're saying. Because we're not.
From eighty-four to what?
Well, eighty-four to seventy-eight, because we're counting, we're not counting the eight. Again, if we add the eight, then we get to eighty-six.
I, I don't see anything in the code that says you can't use the eight.
We gladly will.
Yeah.
And, and if that's the case, then, then it's not clear to me, just from the data that I can read in the report, that there is a need for in-lu parking fees.
If we count those eight, there is.
And so I'm, I'm asking for someone, anyone, to help me understand why the numbers don't add up in my head. Lucas, you want to take a shot?
Because, because those eight.
I'm not trying to put anybody on the spot here. I'm just, I'm, I'm trying to understand because we're, we're talking about, uh, and I'm, it's probably chump change compared to what you're spending to rehab this whole place and re-landscape it and build new buildings. But money is money. So I'm, I'm trying to understand where the requirements are coming from. And it all seems to derive from parking counts and parking space counts, parking requirements and parking space counts somehow.
I think there's a bunch of different ways that this, this can be, um, can be, can be addressed. I think, I think Chair Quilisi, the, the points that you're making are, are valid. I think you're, you're making sense from a hard number standpoint, which I think is valid as well. Uh, there's, there's a whole, there's, there's, there's a purpose to what we're discussing tonight. And not only that, but um, the applicant and staff have, have been going around and around with this really since, since, since before September, really. Um, to arrive at what we're seeing here as a, as a finite, but not necessarily a finite, but where we're at currently. Um, you're obviously seeing numbers a little bit differently, but that's because with your training, you've gone through very specific ways of looking and analyzing information.
I know.
The information that's on these pages helps to provide you and give you a, a guide. There are certain aspects that have um, some flexibility in how that can be addressed. You can easily say, yes, let's include as, as a commission determination, let's, let's include the eight. Or we don't want to include the eight for the following reasons. And those aren't necessarily derived per specific to the code. Those are derived specifically as, as the, as the nature of the use um, would be handled. So just know that. In addition to that, the three parking spaces that are offsite or on the street.
On street, yes.
Are a benefit to the way in which the applicant has been reorganizing the site um, in terms of managing the site for parking on as well as offsite. So just, just know that the net gain is three for, I mean, in terms of how you're looking at it from Matilaha to.
Contribution of three new spaces to the community.
Right. Right. So staff sees as a, as an opportunity for, for it to be, um, uh, what's the word I'm looking for? For it to be uh, provided as a part of the parking calculation. Which is where staff arrived at the six. I know you're speaking to the sixty-one plus fourteen to get you to the seventy-five, taking out the event um, aspect. But then, I, I don't know how you're arriving at one seventeen, to be quite honest.
Okay.
Adding the eight, yeah.
He's adding the eight.
I, I added up.
Oh, you're adding the.
Spaces.
One oh nine plus eight.
I said thirty-one plus nine plus eighteen plus eight plus fifty-one.
Oh, the available, I see what you're saying.
That's a hundred and seventeen.
The hundred and nine plus the eight for the Circle Drive parking.
Yeah.
Okay, so I'm the last one to know that. Okay. That's fair. That makes, that makes.
Misunderstood some of those numbers.
No, that makes sense. It's just driving.
Enough parking here.
The reason why that was identified separately because I didn't want to include it um, just by default. I think there needed to be a discussion as to whether or not that either A, needed to be included as a part of it, or B.
I think there needs to be an ironclad guarantee that that parking is available to the hotel guests and patrons. And a signed agreement with the other property owner would do it, I think. Is that right?
Are you talking about like a reciprocal agreement of some sort or a parking agreement?
Well, it's on our property.
The, the thing is, is it's on their property. It's not something that's.
I'm not talking about the eight or the eighteen or the nine.
You're talking about the twenty and the thirty.
I'm talking about the twenty and thirty-one over there.
We're in control of that property.
Okay.
Yeah, and there's.
You have a signed agreement that you're allowed to use up to fifty-one spaces depending on the time of day. And you have right of first refusal to purchase the ground
Correct.
if the ownership changes.
Correct.
Okay, well, that's.
Yeah, and those, those agreements have been a part of, are a part of this, this um, report as well as an attachment, so.
Now, it still, it still feels a little squishy to me when we say the ninety-eight, sixty-one hotel, fourteen restaurant, and twenty-three event space. Clearly, that's not the number of people that would be there necessarily. But if there are, if there are recognized standards for, for how many parking spaces you need because a percentage of these numbers is all overlapped. There's hotel guests at the restaurant, there's hotel guests at the event space. I will accept that because it's, it's something.
Yes, Mr., or Steve, Commissioner Quilisi, if you, if you, if you look at page five of thirty on attachment D.
Yes.
Santic, Santic provided those numbers and how they came up with the ninety-eight spaces. I think that's where the ninety-eight came from. So I think on, on the chart on page five of sixteen of the staff, um, write-up, those numbers might not.
That's the same numbers?
Yeah, it's the ninety-eight that you were, you were trying to figure out. That's, that's what Santic came up with that. That's based on their, uh, their calculations. And they're, and they're looking at, they're looking at a hundred and fifty-person capacity occupancy with ninety-two of those people in the hotel. So there'd be fifty-eight additional people. And those people could be attending the hotel or the restaurant, et cetera, or event space, and they kind of add up what that total is. Um, and, and I think what Lucas was doing in his chart is he was looking at all-day demands. He wasn't looking at the lot availability after five o'clock. That's where the one oh nine comes through.
All day being eight to five or whatever.
Yeah, he's looking at the eight to five, uh, which has a limit of twenty spaces at that at the property at two oh nine, two eleven West Ojai Avenue. So that's why there's that overlap of on-street demand parking and the Circle Drive parking.
And the, uh, the ninety-eight that's called out as the parking demand.
Yeah, that's the demand, that's on that attachment.
I don't care at this point. That includes two factors. One, reducing the overall numbers because there's overlaps in the bodies between hotel and restaurant, between hotel and event.
And, and event space. They're looking at the maximum amount of people that would be at the hotel at one point, point in time.
And it also includes your twenty or so staff people?
Correct, correct. Uh, that, to be fair, I, I think the twenty number is not a consideration of a event happening at full capacity of a hundred and fifty people there. I think the, the baseline of using an adjustment is additional staff beyond the hotel calculation. And I want to point out, I think a big thing that is considered with the event space calculation is a lot of uh, consideration has been placed on how the relationship between guests, as I've mentioned, reserving the hotel, are going to be using it. It's a primary space for the hotel.
Right.
Uh, so it is highly, highly unusual that we're going to see an occupancy in that space of a hundred and fifty people on a regular basis. We've agreed and accept the intent of the condition, which is in the report, that talks about a very in-depth analysis annually with staff to review on a very comprehensive level how many events we have.
Bring some real data to the table, yeah.
Real data. What's the relationship between hotel rooms and event space? How many people are there? What days of week? All of those things that people want to know. What are the hours of operation? How many cars, by the way, are booking, are, are going to be staying there for their guests? How many do we validate? What time?
That, that helps us validate these.
Absolutely.
The, the, the number of parking spaces, we can go count.
Absolutely.
The number of parking spaces required is this statistical thing that's going to come out eventually. Yes, Sherry?
The traffic. Mr. Lammers is raising his hand to speak.
Oh, okay, Mr. Lammers. Yeah, I can't see you here because we're only getting loudest talker. Sorry if it's me all.
Correct. From the phone. So I, I wanted to add that there was a second portion to the parking analysis that we provided, and I don't know made it into the, uh, into your staff report, is that we calculated both on the requirement of the overlapping uses, you know, assuming that a good portion, uh, fifty to seventy-five percent of, uh, of hotel patrons would also be using the restaurant and the, in the event space, which, which is logical. Now, the second part is the parking demand, uh, based upon the I T E parking demand rates. And I T E is the Institute of Transportation Engineers. I'm pretty sure you're familiar, at least with some of that. Uh, and they provide rates, uh, for hotels. And a hotel in, in traffic engineering terms is, and I quote, a place lodging to provide sleeping accommodations, supportive facilities such as restaurants, cocktail lunches, meeting and banquet rooms, or convention facilities, limited recreation use, pools, fitness rooms, and other retail and service shops. And so counts, extensive counts have been collected by, uh, by I T E at such locations, which pretty much describes the hotel. And, and rates have been developed based upon the, uh, number of rooms as the, uh, um, independent variable. And using that calculation, um, we're, um, uh, we're coming out to fifty-two spaces during weekdays. And then on a Saturday, which of course is a little higher, we're coming out to seventy-eight spaces. So the reason why I bring this up is that there's um, and recognized overlap of the anomalies that a hotel would typically provide, right? And that's why the parking calculation of different uses, the hotel, any event space, and the restaurant come out to be lower than the cumulative total. Otherwise, there's three different uses on three different sites. I hope that makes sense.
It does. Um, also, I think you didn't give yourself enough credit. I'm looking at, um, this is attachment F, page six. You've got existing on Matilaha, uh, I'm sorry, existing on Matilaha Street, ten spaces and proposed seven, but you've actually proposed nine. So there's a couple more there.
Can you repeat that?
I'm sorry?
Can you repeat that?
Yes, there's a table on appendic, or, uh, attachment F, page six. The last portion of the table re-established on-street, on-street, it's not on-street parking. That's all. The proposed.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, that's a big one.
Now I'm confused.
This is what, uh, the applicant had shared in this submission, this, this, this chart you're talking about.
Well, we need, we need to go through that in some detail another time, I think. Uh, we're, we're trying to get to the point now where we can give you some, I think, some general advice. And I, so far at least personally, I have come up with the idea that, that there's enough parking spaces between the block bounded by Signal, Ojai, Ventura, and Matilaha, the lot on the north side of Matilaha, and the lot on West Ojai. I think there's enough spaces. Any other commissioners have a thought about that? I've got a hundred and seventeen versus ninety-eight plus something, I'm not sure.
Commissioner Quilisi, the other thing I'd, I'd just like to just add to the prior statement is that there's, there's, there's obviously this exercise to come up with, I mean, believe me, we've spent too much time that takes us away from what we're good at.
Not surprised, yeah.
Focus on this calculation exercise. And it's been.
Focus on this calculation exercise. And it's been very intense, if you can imagine, and stressful because we've lost a lot of time. In addition to that. Sorry. In addition to that, I did want to point out that it's great to get a plan that's approved based on uses and requirements and code, but unless you can management and produce information that shows that you're complying with what you agree to, it's worthless. So what we're proposing in the condition is that kind of conversation to ensure that we allow some validation to what we're asking for and make adjustments as we need to. And through the operation, manage parking that we're paying for, it's a direct cost to have actual people manage parking responsibility. We're not doing it because we want to be a valet operator. We're doing it to create a better management experience for our guests and the community. So I just wanted to point that out because that has been a position from feedback we received. We've took it, taken it very seriously, and it's reflected in our revision to our plan.
Well, and we haven't gotten back to a resolution with real conditions of approval yet. And one that we dealt with last week in the Rancho Inn, and I, I see raising its ugly head here again tonight, is the requirement that the applicant or the property owner enforce parking at the off-site parking spaces. And I don't see how that's legal. But we'll come to that another time when we get back to a real resolution with real conditions of approval.
Sure, just one.
I want to make sure that you guys follow the rules. I want to make sure the city follows the rules.
Sure, and just, just to be fair, we're coming at this from a very transparent place, telling you everything we intend to do. Comparing it to a venue that has not chosen to do that is asking for forgiveness is unfair comparison.
Okay. I'm not criticizing anybody here. I'm just trying to make sure everybody follows the rules.
Chair Quilce.
Yes, sir.
I want to, if we could, also provide an opportunity for, we have members of the community here as well, I believe. But, and I'm not sure that they want to speak on this as well.
Okay. Sherry, you were, you were pointing out something.
Vice Chair Nolan wanted to speak again.
Oh, very good. Vice Chair Nolan, please.
Oops.
There you are.
You're muted.
You're muted, I guess.
I think I muted and unmuted. I'll pass at the moment and I'll wait till after public comment.
Okay.
Thank you, Sherry.
Sure. Are, are we agreeable to just open the public hearing at this point? I, I thank you applicants. Please take a seat and we'll, we'll hear from the community and then we'll probably get back into this again.
Thank you very much.
All right. And then, so we will open the public hearing. And I have two cards. And then we'll see if there's anybody virtually wanting to speak as well. First card that I received, Chet Hilgers, and following that, Bill Miley.
Hello, commissioners. I just wanted to speak in support. I've, I've known these gentlemen for, some of them longer than others. And I just wanted to say Ed Libby would be proud. This is an amazing time in my life, living here all my life since the late sixties and having relatives for decades before that. My parents used to go to the hotel when it was a hotel when I was very young. They used to listen to Lynn Hansen sing there. And it's just amazing to me to listen to the discussion tonight about parking and, and issues that come up. It must drive Lucas nuts. I can't imagine how many hours he spent doing this. But it's, it's, it's incredible to me that they've gone to such great lengths as far as buying property to accommodate parking off-site and which they're allowed to do. So I just want to commend them for that. And, and I, I can see a day coming in the near future when city parking lots are going to be metered. It's just, it's coming. So I just want to say compromise, right? Don't be unreasonable. Don't make it punitive for the applicant. I want to see this hotel open up, open up again in my lifetime. It would be amazing, right? And it's, it's a once-in-a-lifetime project, second only to the skate park. So I've seen in my life, living here since the late sixties, I've seen the town lose Bunce Brothers lumber, the train, the packing house, the cement plant, the theater, Henderson Airport, the bowling alley, Lake Casitas is on its way out, and the miniature golf course, and Matilah and Wheeler Hot Springs, all gone. Can we at least save the El Roblar? Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening. For the record, my name is Bill Miley. My family arrived here in nineteen sixty-eight, fifty-three years ago, and I love this place. I want this hotel to succeed greatly. My comments tonight are on vehicle, what I call vehicle parking management. One, parking, in my opinion, is the lifeblood of a hotel. Dedicated destination parking is a must. I see establishing a smart, reliable, long-term parking design as the foundational item for this development. Depending on shared parking, which I kind of understand may not be actually what they have now with new information. Depending on shared parking arrangement, which is changeable and cancelable, this is before I found out what's going on here, is really not a good idea. It's problematic. Two, what I call destination parking, in my opinion, means dedicated places which the city, commission and council recognizes as needed for the years to come and which will enhance our city's values. Three, a new term tandem parking has been introduced, in my opinion. It needs further definition as to how it will work. Four, plans for parking expansion. I am very pleased you bought the Militar, the Matilah Lot. I really, I, I came up with the idea and mentioned it last month, and maybe, I don't know whether you read it or not, but together.
We did. We did. We read it.
Okay. So maybe you could, a lot of people don't like this idea. Maybe you could put a second story on it and build the first one down four feet. I don't know. Okay. Did I hear right that El Roblar Hotel has a contract for first right of refusal on the property at two oh nine, two eleven West Ojai Avenue?
Correct.
Yay. Okay. Because I was just going to talk about having a Plan B. So what I know about you, and I don't know any of you personally, but I know Mr. Gritty, Mr. Gritty for a long time, not personally, that you have a great commitment for Ojai, and I like the backup plan you have on the property. So number five, new street and front parking I support. Six, who gets the valet service? There seemed to be some question about that, and you're going to work it out, to two oh nine. Seven, I have a concern about, you do too, about the valet workers and the visitors who are parking vehicles at two oh nine, two eleven as they walk back and forth. And I know you do too. Eight, very important is having a Plan B. And this is what I put down before I heard what you said. I see, I would suggest that the shared parking, I'm writing this as I, yesterday, with fifty percent or more at two oh nine and two eleven, with a development agreement that says if you lose the parking, you have to shut the rooms down. Boy, do I not like, that is really bad. In my opinion, this fallback option is scary and tragic. I would not want it to be a real option. My plan for B is to allow an interim use for a parking facility if you lose that by the city so that you don't have to shut the rooms down. If you have to shut them down, that would be tragic and unacceptable. That not only penalizes the hotel, it penalizes the city. And it creates what I call a damaged brand for the El Roblar Hotel, which they may take years to get over. So I don't like that at all. And here's what you could do. The city could make available places on South Montgomery at the big parking lot. It doesn't look like you're going to need that. Okay. Employee parking, I didn't see, and I would like to see you have addressed, address that in a paragraph separate. I estimate that between thirty and forty employees per day will need parking. And I don't want them to have to go around streets and find parking. I would like them to have a dedicated place that they park because second to parking, no. Without the employees, the hotel is dust. Okay. Eleven, where will the delivery trucks deliver? I'm not sure of that. And so I, I would like to see you address that.
The delivery truck will deliver into the Signal Street parking lot.
Where the tandem is.
But they've always delivered.
If you've got enough room, that's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, in conclusion, this project is complicated as it should be. It will change both the structure and the function of an almost historic hotel established a hundred years ago into a viable destination which has to blend this function into an established downtown environment. It requires focused thinking on key factors as parking for guests, parking for visitors, management staff parking, service staff parking, and service delivery parking when they have to fix things. Dedicated destination parking is a foundational factor in supporting not only the hotel function, but also the greater downtime dyna, downtown, anyway, downtown dynamics. It should add to the viability of the downtown, not the congestion of this already busy area. And I am told by a friend, this is Dan, who's in the know, that our playhouse at Signal and Ojai will probably open in two thousand twenty-two with up to two hundred seats. And where will they park? I think this city ought to support this hotel in helping them get dedicated destination parking that they can use forever. And I'm eighty-nine, and I hope it happens before I die like Chet said. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I, I want to make it clear both to the folks here in City Hall and to the folks that may be listening or watching outside. This is a discussion item tonight. We are trying to give feedback to the applicants and ask clarification questions of staff so that when we do come back for a decision, first of all, we have more information so the commission can make a more informed decision. And two, none of the commissioners this evening is expressing any opinions about this project should be voted up or down because we're not in a public meeting in which we are deliberating the merits of this case. So we are going to stay away from expressing approval or disapproval per se, but we will ask you questions for clarification, both staff and applicants. Hoping everybody understands that part. Are there any commissioners who have?
We have Don T. Dean on.
Oh, you have someone on the line?
Yeah.
Oh, very good. Well, let's put him on.
Don, go ahead. You're on mute.
And please identify yourself and speak.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you for calling on me. I, I didn't know that my hand had been raised. So I'm just listening and getting more information on the project, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I have no further comment at this time. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else, Sherry?
Rick Ridgeway.
Rick Ridgeway?
You're on, Rick. If you just, Eric is unmuted. Go ahead.
Thank you guys so much. I am an Ojai resident. I've lived here for thirty years now. I resided next door to Ramin when he bought the place. And I've witnessed how he restored and enhanced that property. I think that Libby would have been really proud of what Ramin and his wife Donna have done with that property. As an interior designer, his aesthetic has been impeccable. And I'm also on the board of the Turtle Conservancy, so I've known Eric Good quite well for a number of years. And I've also had the pleasure of staying in several various hotels and eating in his restaurants. And I know Commissioner Bennett, you, you don't want to should know what the vibe was going to be of the hotel. And based on my experience watching Ramin enhance his property, the opportunities I've had to stay in Eric's hotels and eat in his restaurants, I can assure you and all the commissioners that what they'll bring to our town and the El Roblar Hotel is going to really be a gift to the community. It will be, you know, it will honor the, the vibe and, and the value of Ojai. When I stayed in some of Eric's hotels in New York, I have really observed how the design is of those places is, is so classic. The quality of the materials is, is first class. You know, I really pay attention to things like fixtures in a hotel room. They're as good as it gets. And also the staff in the hotels and the restaurants are just impeccably trained. They offer the warmest experience to guests in the hotels. The restaurants, his Waverly Inn in New York is, I mean, it's the best place I've ever eaten in that, in that city. So as you guys consider this, I just invite you to pay attention to what these gentlemen have created in, in other areas and then right here in our own town of Ojai as well. Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, sir. Chris Land. Okay. Please go ahead, sir.
Yes, thank you.
It is a mess, sir.
I've been listening. We were, my wife and I were happy to see a map of our house included in the overview of the Beacon parking lot. We've been following this case closely, and Lucas and I have spoken. I know this is late in the evening, and I'm going to keep my remarks short because we've submitted our concerns in writing. But they really boils down to the fact that as excited as we are to see this hotel come into being and be restored the way it is, and we appreciate the thought and intention that's going into that. For those of us who live on Topa Topa Drive, who back up to the parking lot at Beacon, the proposal right now really represents a huge intrusion into our life. You know, Beacon closes at two P M. and the lot is quiet after that. And if it's going to be used as an overflow lot for people coming back from the restaurant and from weddings for self-park purposes, you know, that's going to be loud all late into the night. And I think that even if it is with, I can't remember the alternative name to valet parking, the guided parking, if, if it's a guided parking solution, e- even that seems to bear a lot of risks for those of us. And it's a real change to our corner of the neighborhood. So I hope that the city, the, you know, you commissioners and the developers all take that into consideration because I know a lot of thought is going into this development to keep it in line with community values and community history. And so our, our, our way of life in that little corner of the backing up the Beacon is important too. So I, I know you'll take that into consideration. And please read our remarks that we've submitted in longer form. And I just think also, in, in general, it's a short term, this, this Beacon lot, the two nine, two twelve, two eleven West Ojai Avenue solution, it's a, it's a, I think a five-year lease in terms of the lease that was appended to the proposal. That seems to me a short-term solution to what really needs to be a long-term parking situation. And I, and I agree with some of you that maybe the parking requirement that's being put on the developers is a little bit onerous and maybe over and above what's needed. But I, I, I guess I, I beg of you not to solve the numbers at, at the expense of those of us who back up to the Beacon parking lot. Thanks for hearing me out.
Very reasonable. Thank you, sir. Sherry, do we have anyone else who wishes to speak? Okay, then Nikhil, Lucas, would it be appropriate to close the public hearing?
It would, but I want to clarify one point. I believe one of the, one of the members of the public had identified a lease aspect, I think, to two oh nine to two eleven West Ojai.
What I just heard was a five-year lease.
Five-year, which I don't believe is correct. I believe it's a twenty-year lease, correct? So I just wanted, yeah.
Yeah, five, five years. Ten years with a ten.
Yeah, can you just address it? Thank you.
So it's a twenty-year lease in total. Five years have been used. There's five more plus ten years of an option. So a total of fifteen.
So you've already used up five years?
Correct.
Oh, wow.
Correct.
There's an investment. Okay.
So, but with first right of refusal to purchase the property.
Yeah, okay. So you're golden for at least the next fifteen years.
Correct. Correct. And then, you know, Lucas, something that, is it all right if I talk now? Okay, you want to finish?
Yeah, I was looking just to answer the question and then turn it back to the chair.
Okay. Is there anyone else here in the building or out there in the ether who wishes to speak? All right, then we will close the public hearing. And we're not deliberating because we're not coming to a decision tonight. The question that I would have then for both staff and the applicants is, do you feel like you have gotten as much, first of all, as much feedback as you can get from us poor commissioners? And second, as much as you think you need from us?
Wait.
Oh, Commissioner Lottis, okay, you have another question.
Well, no, I don't have questions. I thought we were going to give feedback, and I was waiting for
Oh, okay, yes.
For that section of the meeting, so that's why I didn't, I didn't.
Right, we're not deliberating, we're feeding back right now.
Right.
Right, so think of another item that we had back in November, I want to say November seventeenth, where there was an opportunity for the commission to provide kind of an overview.
My intent would be to go around the horn with all the commissioners and say, what do you think now?
Yep, I think that's appropriate.
And I just threw my question in first. Have we given you enough to work on for the moment?
And just as a caveat to that, what do you think now doesn't mean that I will vote to approve or disapprove this project, so.
I have not taken a position on the project. I don't expect that any other commissioner has at this point.
Just making sure.
Yeah. Okay, Commissioner Lottis, you said you had some comments. I'm sorry, I didn't get an answer to my question. Have, well, why don't we hold that question until you've heard from all the commissioners one more time? And then we'll say, did you get what you needed out of this meeting? Commissioner Lottis?
Okay. Just, yeah, I will say, I think the development team is wonderful. Honestly, I know a lot more about you than you think, probably. And I just am very pleased, I am so pleased that you, three or four of you, have stepped forward to take on this challenge. And I just want to say that, I cannot emphasize it more. And just because.
We're not voting tonight.
Pardon?
We are not voting tonight, so be careful what you say.
Okay, I'm just saying I'm pleased with who has stepped forward to take on this challenge. And the fact that we ask a lot of questions or may indicate positions one way or another, I don't think any of that is, we're just trying to get at clear information, as Chair Kulisi said, so that we can make an informed decision at the end of this. So I just wanted to reiterate that, so I'm looking at the staff report under discussion items, and I'll just kind of briefly go through the discussion items that include exterior modifications. I just want to reiterate that I think, at least my final, my decision on this will depend on getting the historical resource evaluation. So as beautiful as the current renderings might be, I do think that we're going to have to look at the historical evaluation. Let's see, I don't really have anything specific in terms of feedback on, you know, your demolition, your reconstruction, your repurposing of the gym area into the event space, or any of the other building alterations. I think that in terms of the parking, I still am very concerned about the off-site parking at the Beacon Lot. It may be a case of the devil is in the details where we can really put in writing in terms of conditions on this project exactly how it will be managed, what it's going to look like, the hours and so forth. But I just am concerned about off-site parking in general as a solution to what's happening in the town. Let's see, I do wonder about the changing, the egress back onto Ojai Avenue. And I am wondering about keeping that egress onto Ventura, in part because it might allow even more parking as you're, you know, you're counting eight now with the Circle Drive. You know, I don't know, what would the difference be to keep it straighter, taking it out to Ventura? Could you add another couple of cars? Just wondering about that.
Commissioner, can I answer that question for you?
Sure.
So the reason we decided to come back out onto Ojai Avenue is because the way it currently is now, when you go onto Ventura Avenue, people want to tend to make a left there on
Right.
And it blocks the right-hand turn. That's the first concern. Also, with our assisted parking, if not having assisted parking, people pull through and drive around through a neighborhood instead of putting back onto Ojai Avenue. And so that corner is really kind of difficult and dangerous now as it is, and we've seen just from being there on site that this is an issue. I don't think you'd get many more cars by doing that. And I think it leads to more, to have a safer pedestrian experience with that crosswalk at that corner that crosses Ojai Avenue there at Ventura.
Okay, okay. Thanks for the response on that. With your landscaping, I'm hoping that maybe that big group of palms that look kind of dead maybe can come out. They're pretty hazardous. That's a fine detail, so don't worry about that right now.
Those are going away.
Wonderful. I think, yeah, I think my biggest concern, I'm happy to, I'm so happy to see additional onsite parking. You've gone a long way for that. I am very impressed with the fact that you've bought the lot, the 202 Ventura. And I am not opposed to valet parking, in other words, to tandem parking, and as long as that's properly managed.
Right.
So I think that, I think that covers my comments for tonight. Thank you, thanks, Chair Kulisi.
Thank you, ma'am. Vice Chair Nolan, last comments?
Yes, actually, Commissioner Lottis, thank you for your comments. I tend to agree with most of what you said. I also wanted just to thank the entire team on this project for, you know, working with the city and working with the community and so, you know, thoughtfully trying to figure it all out and make it balanced and best for everyone. And I will comment later once we get the historical information. You know, it's a little premature right now until that information gets back to us. Probably my general concern is with the parking and the off-site parking, not the lot on Ventura, I think that's fine, but it's really the Beacon Lot. How that, how it's going to be managed, what it's going to look like and how it's going to work. So a little more details on that coming back would be really helpful. But in general, I think I'm going to leave it at that. I mean, I don't really have any other comments. So keep it short and sweet.
Very good. Commissioner Trent, any final comments for staff and applicants?
I just want to echo what my fellow commissioners had mentioned. You know, I would say to the applicants, obviously, the off-site location is the primary, well, it's one of the big focal points. So I think maybe look at addressing that circulation pattern that you're proposing, you know, how pedestrians are going to go to and fro, to, you know, back and forth to the parking lot. Look at, you know, how's the security going to work on the site? You know, what's going on with, like, how do you address potential loitering that might happen after events? You know, I would also like to see, this is off-topic of the parking, but some sort, and I didn't see it, maybe you have it in the plans, but some sort of gray water recapturing program or some way to capture storm water so we can help, you know, fill up our groundwater. But in general, I do like the collaborative approach you guys are taking, very thorough, and I love the historical context that you're bringing up and just the overall, you know, level of effort that you're putting into this and working with the city. And I appreciate that. So I think in the end, we'll, you know, we'll figure out what the best solution is for the hotel and for the city, something that we can all work with for the next hundred years.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner Trent, just one comment, if I may.
Yes, please go ahead.
On the idea of having some form of reuse of resources on the site. We are working closely with a community expert called Regina Hirsch. She works for Watershed Progressive, consults with some of the, you know, larger operations here in Ojai and Ventura. And their team is giving us lots of feedback on how we can use some of our water systems in a very efficient way and also capture water where we can. So there's a lot of great plans going into that we hope to share with you soon.
Awesome. Thank you so much.
Yeah. I think it's a general policy in the city that what rainfall lands on your parcel should stay on your parcel. As far as the gray water, that's a whole separate thing that has to do with building standards, among other things, because you're talking about replumbing. Commissioner Bennett?
I think the problem area continues to be parking. I think you've gone a long way to ameliorating the issue. I have no problem with, as a matter of feedback, I have no problem with valet parking or assisted parking or whatever you call it. It seems to me with the density, and there's a lot of density right there, there's a lot of movement, that actually having people who can assist people trying to park, getting their cars out of their hands and into somebody's hands who can take it and put it someplace makes a lot of sense. Stack parking is obviously something which requires assisted parking. And it doesn't surprise me that a building that was designed originally a hundred years ago with the use of automobiles now, people don't come by train, the train's gone, they don't come by train. They don't stay as long. They haven't got the time. So I think it's natural that parking would become an issue. And I don't know if you've had the benefit of seeing it or not, we got some correspondence today from the people on Topa Topa, and we heard from one of those people today. And it's clear they're going to have some impacts back there across the fence line to their yards. And so taking those into consideration as you move through this process, I think, is important. And I think also in terms of the mix, you know, on the one hand, I'd love to see all of the math done and every parking slot identified as to what it was going to be used for.
Yeah, sure.
But I think that you're going to feel it as you go along. And again, by having management, parking management there, you're going to be much further ahead. And to pour down to the specific, I'm not sure you want people who are patrons going back to the twenty slots in the back. I think that's where you want to put your employees, because the employees aren't going to arrive at their car drunk at two in the morning. You know, they're going to be coming and going in respectful, and they'll be in your manage, you can manage that if there is any problem. So anyway, I notice we are not yet at the, talking about the way it looks. But in general, I must say that from my feedback, I like the idea of the Board and Batten stuff being in addition to the Mead and Requa plaster buildings.
Spanish Revival, yeah.
So anyway, I look forward to the next steps. And obviously, you are maintaining here that you are doing things that are appropriate historically, but you'll have to go through the Historical Committee Commission to vet that for us before we take another swipe at it.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's my feedback.
All right. My feedback is with the, and as you can imagine, we have gotten arguably more community input via emails or whatever on this project than almost anything I've seen in five years on the Planning Commission. And the negative comments all seem to be about off-site parking that I recall. The positive comments had to do with contributing to the vitality of the community, building a nice building again and all of that. And I think all the commissioners are taking that into account. I would say that in terms of the design, I have no problems with any of the design. I used to have board and batten on my house. I've got stucco now, but I don't have any barrel tile on the roof. But all of those certainly seem, my feedback, that those are consistent with one or another part of the community. And so I didn't find anything that I would object to in any of the design of any of your I would still like to understand the parking. I know that we cannot identify every space as to what it's to be used for, and I'm not urging that. But I would like to understand, perhaps it's from StanTech saying these are accepted standards, that this is the kind of parking you need for this size hotel, and it takes into account staff, and it takes into account overlap of one use with another use and the same person, or the same parking space, I should say. And like Commissioner Bennett, I have no problem with tandem parking. If you're controlling who's putting the car where, then you can control, and you will learn as you go how to make it most efficient for retrieving cars when people come at random times and want to leave. So that seems like it's probably a solution that has been worked out in many times and many places over the years. So I don't have a problem with that. I would not object to having all valet parking because you do control it that way. But I will leave that for now. I don't object to that. And then I just have one question for staff. Could you explain, I understand now that the Historic Preservation Commission will at some point have a hearing on the El Roblar, the proposed El Roblar Hotel. Can you estimate when that might be first? Can you tell me when the Historic Preservation Commission comes to a decision? And I don't know what the form of the decision would be, a thumbs up or a thumbs down on the project as a whole? And what is the precedence and priority of that with a decision, thumbs up or thumbs down, by the Planning Commission? I know that our decisions are appealable to the city council. I don't know if it came to that, if a Historic Preservation Commission negative decision is appealable to the Planning Commission, or if it even needs to be. Is that just a piece of advice from another commission?
Yeah, it's providing feedback for this commission to consider as well. So as a part of the Historic Resources Report, which, by the way, we're in the weeds with them currently, we're going through that process right now. We've already gone out to RFP, we have selected, we, meaning the city, has selected ARG as the group that's going to be moving forward with it. And then in addition to that, and a part of, as a part of this process, the Historic Resources Report will put together an analysis, and that analysis will Resources Report will put together an analysis, and that analysis will then be forwarded, a final analysis, will be forwarded to the, to the commission for recommendation. That recommendation will then go to this Planning Commission for consideration as well.
Okay. And we're talking about things like, I think it's called character-defining elements of the design?
Yeah, so there's, and as I was explaining to the applicants as well, there's two ways that this could, this could go. It either fits into the box of CEQA in terms of it going through some sort of CEQA process, or it fits into the box of an exemption. And that's where we're at right now, navigating that course currently.
Okay.
There's an exemption that could potentially be within that. That exemption requires certain aspects to be followed, including the Secretary of Interior standards. So we're, we're working with the consultant, the Historic Resources Consultant on that right now.
Okay. I presume that the applicants are aware of the Secretary of Interior standards?
Absolutely.
Okay. Okay, so it's, we've given our feedback to staff and the applicants tonight. I expect for the applicants, the next, the next formal step with some part of the city is going to be a hearing with the Historic Preservation Commission?
Yes.
And then following that, interspersed, obviously, with discussions with city staff. And I have to say, I don't know how it is that Lucas is finding any time to sleep.
Yeah, I take notes.
There are so many things going on. We've got three, we've got three Planning Commission meetings this month. And our two a month is twice as many as any other commission already. So, so there's an awful lot going on. I'm reminded of the duck on the lake. It looks very placid above the water, but those feet are going like this. And that's what the city staff is doing with you applicants all the time. And I salute them for that.
And I would like also to note that I'm in constant conversation with the chair for HPC.
Yes.
And
We talk at least once a week about what's coming and why, and what might happen next.
Right.
So we're staying, I'm staying as well-informed as I can, but he knows everything. So.
I don't know about everything, but I can at least find the answers.
Everything, everything I know about this, I learned from him. Not everything he knows, just what I know. Is there anything else that any commissioner would like to go back to one more time? If not, then, then I think we should move on to item three on the agenda and just take a look at upcoming events.
I just had one last question.
Yes, sir.
Lucas, we had discussed the opportunity to review conditions with some of the intentions that were implied with those conditions, mainly that had some concerns on our side. Not all of them, but there were three in particular. Now, one option would be to review them tonight. Another one would be to schedule another session potentially to do that.
Just to focus on the conditions?
Well, I presume we would want to also address some of the feedback received in this meeting.
Sure.
And present it to the extended impacts. Thankfully, I feel really confident and happy and pleased that we have such great support, both from the community and the council so far. But I do believe there is some more questions that definitely need answers for some of the feedback received, and probably that relates to the conditions as well. The specifics involve hours of operation, which is a really big consideration, as well as the off-site parking valet service, or self-park is the big question mark. So those are the main two that I'd love to talk about, but they're all related.
As I've said already, I have concerns that the city might attempt to hold the applicant responsible for where patrons park. Not suggesting where they should park, but holding the patron, or holding the applicants responsible with the hammer of rescinding the permit if guests or patrons park in otherwise legal parking spaces anywhere in the city. I don't, we went through this last week. I don't think it's possible. I don't think it's in the police powers of the city to say that any individual person cannot park in an otherwise legal space. And therefore, I don't think that the city can require the applicant or property owner to enforce such a rule. That's one of the conditions I suspect that you're talking about. And, and we do need to talk through that at some point.
So there's, there's one of two ways that, that this could, I would recommend, at least from the perspective I'm looking at here, for, for me to work with the applicant in terms of, of putting some sort of a draft together that then comes forward. Understand that the way in which these were crafted, I took out some of the harder language that you would normally see in terms of approval and, and shaws and stuff like that, only because they were meant to be kind of guiding principles in terms of how we're looking at this. There's harder rules in terms of how we would, or how I would end up crafting some of this, that I think is important for them, for the applicant to see, and then also for a conversation piece for the commission to see as well. So.
We understand what the city wants. We need to understand what the limitations are on what the city can want.
In addition, there were some lessons learned from last week, I think, in terms of a hard discussion.
Yeah.
That ended up having some of those conditions revised. And I think that hasn't been reflected in some of these conditions that you're seeing here today.
Right.
Okay. And more specifically, are you citing the idea that a hotel patron, overnight guest or guest of the restaurant cannot use public parking?
I'm saying I don't think it's within the police power of the city.
Yeah.
To enforce that kind of thought.
Sure.
It, it seems reasonable to me that the applicant and the property owner and the, and your agents, the valet attendants can strongly suggest to people, if they are parking themselves, where they ought to park. But you don't have any police power to enforce such a thing. I don't think the city does either. And so we need to, if I am correct in that assumption, then we need to make sure that the conditions of approval reflect that. That's all I'm saying.
Right. Even a better case for managed parking?
Could very well be. I'm not questioning that.
But, but I just, I think, practically, thinking about the alternative, not having a way to manage arrival and parking is going to create that problem that you're describing.
You also will notice that you are right in the middle of a fairly dense part of town. You may have people walk up to your door.
Sure. That's preferred.
And, and you can't tell them where to park. So. I live, I live about six tenths of a mile, five tenths of a mile from your property. If I were coming to be at your restaurant, I would walk. So. Anything else that the applicant wanted to, any one of the applicants want to ask of the commission at this point?
Yeah, I just had one, one more comment. I mean, I think Commissioner Lottis had mentioned a peer review of the parking analysis or something. So I think, you know, for us, time is critical. You know, we've been at this now for 12 months, and, you know, the request for more reports. I mean, I think one of the intentions of this meeting was if you need more information or more reports, please request them now, because we're waiting for the historic report, and we can do the, if there's going to be a peer review, let's do it now, you know. So I think that was one of our hopes, is to just help speed up the process, so we don't come back in two, three months and have another hurdle.
We'll go through this again, yeah. Okay. Well, you have that suggestion from one commissioner?
Yes.
Yes, sir, did you have?
No, that's all.
Oh, okay. Very good. I think perhaps all the commissioners have worn out their vocal cords. How about you, Lucas? You have some final thoughts before we move on to another item?
I just look forward to continuing to work with, with these individuals. I think they've been certainly receptive to the comments and suggestions that I've been providing throughout this entire process. And I think certainly from, from the commission's standpoint, I think a lot of the comments are well-received. A lot of that is reflective of what we've seen from the 55-plus comments that have already come in. And I think it should also be commended that there have been a lot of comments in support and then concerns that have been raised. It's, it's been somewhat of an equal aspect too, but I think.
Which is unusual for cases that we see.
Yeah, I believe overall, I think the community is eager to see the doors reopen for this, this hotel, so.
I did learn one new thing tonight, and that was that the 20 all-day and all-night parking spaces at 209 to 11 are in back. So that's, maybe that's more, more daytime parking. And, and if there are going to be drunken revelers at 2:00 in the morning, I don't know what your operating hours are, don't quote me on it, they're more likely to be parked in front, which would give the folks on Topa Topa Drive a little bit of relief. So.
Right.
That was, I thought that was very interesting. Any final comments from you then, Lucas?
That's it.
Very good. Well, I hope.
I would just like to say thank you to staff.
Amen.
I, I know that I checked my front porch several times Friday night, and no agenda packet. And I went to bed at 11, checking it at that time. When I got up in the morning, there was the agenda packet. So staff is, has got to be flat-out working on all these projects.
Somebody's running around at oh dark 30 doing stuff.
Thank you, staff. It's, you're working above and beyond, that's for sure.
Amen. Amen. Okay, let's, let's, you're welcome to stay. You may wish to go. You're, you may be as tired as anybody else.
Chair Qualese, I will admit, I, I know I did this last week, but I do need to use the restroom again.
Yeah, okay.
Do we entertain a quick five-minute recess? Or do you want to power through?
Can we cover future agenda items in five minutes?
Sure, that's fine.
I think we can probably do that. And then adjourn and be done. Yeah, that's a good, what he said.
All right, that is the last item. Okay, good.
I do recall you mentioned earlier today that you were going to talk about the lotline adjustment on Country Club.
Yes. So there, as you're seeing here on the agenda for the 15th, and as, as was mentioned earlier, when we had public communication, the lotline adjustment, which is LLA 21 dash, that does not look like the correct number. It's 21 001? Is that right? Because I'm only seeing a zero here. But the, the lotline adjustment, the applicants come back with a, with a proposal that has taken it off of the plate of the commission, and that means that the proposal is now less than 10%. And by code, if it's less than 10%, there's two different.
It can be a ministerial decision.
Paths, exactly. It becomes, I don't want to say ministerial, because lotline adjustments still have, we can't necessarily add conditions, but it's just a matter of meeting the requirements.
You could make a director's exemption of it?
Well, no, not necessarily. But in addition to that, it requires a minor variance, because there is still the non-conforming lot issue that, that was mentioned.
Sure.
At the previous meeting. So it's, it's not that it's completely off, but now these are, these aspects are being handled at staff level.
Okay. And the, the key point being that the solution that is currently on the table in front of staff does not change the area of either lot by more than 10%?
Correct.
Okay.
And it's right around 8% is what we're, we're seeing. So that's encouraging.
Okay.
And then we've got, oh yes, Tippel and Ramble, which is coming forward to the, to the Planning Commission. I'll have to admit, it is coming as a DE, as a minor CUP, although it's identified as a CUP, but it is a minor CUP. There has been quite a bit of public comment on this item. And then during further research, the item itself does need and warrants full commission to weigh in and provide the necessary determination.
Okay. Well, I see, I see that the title there is out, includes the phrase "outdoor dining," which means in the public right-of-way. Is that what's going on here?
Outdoor dining.
Are we talking outside seating?
Outdoor dining facilities. So it's within the private, not within the public right-of-way.
Okay.
That's the difference. And obviously, the alcohol, the music aspects.
Sure.
So expect to see something on your doorsteps or virtually. I think some are.
302 South Montgomery. That's one of those townhouses?
What are we at here? South Montgomery, yes.
Okay.
So that's at the corner of.
Willow?
Sorry, it's, but no, wait, it's the, it's the southeast corner of Willow and Montgomery.
Southeast corner, okay.
Southeast corner, yes.
That's currently a mostly empty lot.
Yes, there's a single-family residence tucked in the back.
Yeah.
It's hard to see because there's an existing.
Right, okay.
In addition to that, there's a proposal for, what is this, Topa Topa 401 East?
East Topa Topa. Oh, that's over by that car wash somewhere.
Yes, that's a new single-family residence. So there's a cul-de-sac or a dead-end road, so it's on the south side, so.
Off of Fox Street.
Yeah, not noticeable unless you're driving to that dead end.
Okay.
And then we've got the general plan update in terms of environmental justice, and then the work, work plan. That cleans up what we're looking forward to for the end of the year. Just know that there's a half a dozen that are up and coming for the new year.
Okay.
That we're starting to wrap up.
Any questions of staff about future agenda items? Okay, I see that our City Council liaison has departed the property, and hearing no requests for other discussion at 10:27, we are adjourned. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, everybody.